Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A second while I get my agenda in order. Yeah. Let's go on with Nick.
Can you give it time?
Yeah, please. Okay, first up on the agenda is we have public comments. Is there anybody in the audience who has any comments? All right, we can move on from that. Next up, we have two sets of minutes, meeting minutes from October 21st. Does anybody have any comments about those minutes? All right, and if they're all set, then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 21st. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion of second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five zero. And then we have minutes of November 5th. Does anybody have any comments on the minutes of November 5th? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November 5th. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion of second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Didn't work.
Motion passes five zero. And we have our correspondence items, and I'll make a motion that we accept correspondence items A, B, and O as presented in the agenda. Do we have a second on that motion? We have a second from G. The motion is second. Any further discussion on the acceptance of the correspondence?
Yeah, are we planning on bringing up later in the meeting, under new business, the letter from the DEP?
I have it under chairman report.
Okay, that's fine then.
Anything else? All right, all in favor of the acceptance of the correspondence? Motion passes five zero. All right, now on the consent agenda, we have proclamations for four new Eagle Scouts, James Kolowski, Leo Kolowski, Emmett Carner, and Brian Foley. And their ceremony will be on the 29th at the Maynard Rod and Gun Club at 2:00 PM. I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as printed in the, on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
Consent agenda, okay. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All right. All in favor? Motion passes five zero. Chris, did I hear that you were gonna be at Rod and Gun on that day, on the 29th?
From 9:00 to 12:00.
9:00 to 12:00. You gonna be there 2:00 o'clock?
Well, we could, we could discuss it.
All right, well, otherwise, otherwise I'll be there. I mean, it's pretty fun.
I can be there 2:00 o'clock, yes.
It's pretty fun.
I can go. I can do that.
All right, well, we'll set that up, because I highly recommend the ceremonies. It's a very good Board of Selectmen experience. And speaking of good Board of Selectmen experiences, the next item on the agenda is discussion of making parking downtown free during the holiday period. And this is something we have typically done for quite a number of years now. And what we mean is that the parking meters do not have to be fed, but the time limits have to be abided to. So basically, if it's a two-hour meter, you don't have to pay the meter, but you can't park longer than two hours. And I'm gonna make a motion that we approve free parking at parking meters from starting Friday, November 28th through Saturday, January 3rd. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second it. I'm wondering if you'd be willing to extend it to Sunday, January 4th, just to finish out that weekend.
Well, we don't enforce them on Sundays anyways.
Well, that's true.
I was going for the positive one, didn't get pushed over Saturday.
That's fine by me.
But if you want it, I'll change it. You want me to change it?
Well, those who don't know, that we don't.
Says it on the meter.
It does say it on the meter. All right, I'm gonna stick with what I got. Friday, November 28th through Saturday, January 30th. The motion is that nobody has to pay the parking meters, but they have to abide by the time limits. We have a motion of second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five. Very good. All right. Next item on the agenda is a report on the cultural district hearing. And there was a hearing, what was that, on Thursday?
No.
Wednesday.
Last Thursday, had a representative from the state to do a presentation about cultural districts. And so I'll leave it to Kevin. Or leave it to Andrew, yeah, he was the showman there. Ring leader at that meeting, so, yeah, Andrew, please give us an update on the hearing for those who weren't there, and talk about next steps.
So the public hearing was called to learn more about what a cultural district brings to the community. It's a requirement of the application process to have a hearing of this nature. We invited a enormous number of people, and an enormous number of them showed up. And I think we all learned a lot about the process and the advantages to the community that a cultural district can bring. The woman from the state was a superior, superiorly informative, I should say. She was just an excellent resource for this program. We're left, though, with next steps. And if the Board of Selectmen are so inclined to continue going down this road, I can outline what those next steps might look like, the commitment from the town in the near term and the long term, and then see where it goes from here. The immediate next steps are to summarize the events of last week, send them out to the entire invite list and those who attended, and in doing that, solicit their input into those next steps, which is to create an application to become a cultural district. It's not a little bit of work, and I'm hesitant to commit my own time or other members of the community, employees' time, to that without the backing of the town formally. So I'm hoping that in this solicitation, we wind up with a group of volunteers to move the process forward. I expect to get that. I spoke to many people afterwards, and it appeared that there was a lot of enthusiasm. That partnership would then build the application. And as you may recall from Ms. Jenkins' presentation, we cannot have a cultural district that is a promise to perform something in the future. It needs to recognize what already exists and attempts to move it forward and continue One suggestion that came up, and that I'd like to have this board consider, is that a few months ago, we had a presentation on marketing the downtown from a Adams Art Grant we had received from the state. And that marketing concept overlaps pretty nicely with some of the goals of the cultural district. So the idea that was bandied about was allow the marketing program to tie together all of those elements that already exist downtown. The art studio, the art galleries, the theater, and so on, all those things that we talked about on Wednesday night. Let the marketing program thread those things together, and then that becomes the application. That becomes the, we actually do have something going on there, and we'd like that cultural district designation as a result of that. So essentially, create a little pilot that informs the application. To do that, if you recall, the Adams Art Grant marketing plan would be several thousand dollars for a year, perhaps about six or seven thousand dollars. We thought we might wanna cede that with town money, but that the partners that would be involved in that would be putting up some of the money as well. In addition to that, I think it would make sense to have some money set aside to help in writing the grant application. And it's not really a grant, but it takes the skills of a grant writer to do the cultural district application, and it might help to have some of that money there for that purpose. So in thinking about this since last week, I wanted to propose that the town consider putting up that seed money from the downtown enhancement fund that already exists. There's a hundred thousand dollars set aside for non-specific purposes for downtown enhancement, and the cultural district overlaps almost entirely with our downtown, as does the Adams Art Grant marketing plan. So a few thousand dollars from the downtown enhancement fund, we could create the pilot and then see where the application goes from there. I set that all out as sort of a hypothetical. If I sent out this invitation and summary of all the events of last week to this group, and nobody stands up to move it forward, then nobody would formally request that money. But if they did, if we do get a group of interested people, it would be nice to know that the town wants to get behind it.
And one of the key things I understand from the state process is the commitment to sustain the effort beyond initial application. So I think I agree with what you're saying in that, you know, we need people to stand up and remain standing to keep it moving. But I also appreciate the thought that, you know, these things do take a little bit of money, and so that may be needed too.
When the Adams Art Grant was presented, there was a sense that it would be self-sustaining. And Ms. Jenkins mentioned something about, someone was questioning the costs, and she said that lots of the companies downtown are already spending money on marketing. So if it's channeled into this sort of campaign for the whole district, it may not, it may be sort of revenue neutral or cost neutral to these businesses. But I would let the group that comes together for this process figure out those details and make those arguments. I'm suggesting that it's realistic, but I haven't run the numbers.
I'm very supportive of the initiative and agree that the proposal that Andrew has made to utilize some of the enhancement funds makes sense. The one concern, if I can say it, is I saw that enthusiasm at that meeting, but it's clear, and I think probably the money that's put up front will help to bring somebody in that can sort of be, there's going to need to be a coordinator that has the ability and the skill to really bring all these ideas together. It was a diverse amount of, you know, people were just tossing out ideas and thoughts and whatever, and we really need to have some focus. And that will be the key early on, is to get the focus in on where this is headed so that it doesn't frustrate people who might volunteer to join in and, you know, that there's no real, you know, direction. So that'll be an important first step, is making sure that we have that direction, and somebody is identified as the leader of the group, so that there's not a bunch of people putting in ideas and emails going all over the place, which is another point that Bill and I actually touched upon at the presuming, that if there's a formal committee, that they are subject to the open meeting law and everything else, and that has to be understood as well, if indeed that's the case, that there's a formal committee created by the town.
Yeah, I don't know that we are gonna form a formal committee of the town. I'll find out the legal back and forth on that before I send out this email. But part of the application process is to outline the governance structure and create that sustainability definition. So I think those things would get done before any money actually got requested.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's not really a chicken and egg thing. They lay it out, and then you guys can decide if you wanna help push it forward.
So Andrew, you think, what do you need from us tonight? Just general consensus that, yeah, you should reach out and see what strength of commitment there is?
Yeah, if the Board of Selectmen are completely against this idea, I'd rather know that up front. And I'm more than happy to push it forward a little ways and see what comes back. But if you're gonna shoot it down in two weeks, or three weeks, or whenever they come back with a proposal, let's not waste our time. But if you do support this thing, we can move it forward.
What do you think, guys?
Support the idea.
All right, looks like you got consensus on that.
Thank you.
So keep us updated. Our next item is a discussion of custodial consolidation. I need to step out for a minute, so Jason, can you take over from here? I'll be right back.
So just a brief update, I won't get into too much of the details. Some of the members of the board are aware that at our school town leadership meetings with the superintendent and chair of the school committees over the last 18 months, particularly, and now two of the previous Board of Selectmen chairmans, and now Jason being the representative to the school committee, we've continued the discussion of exploring a town-school consolidated custodial program under the town. The purpose of this agenda item tonight is to discuss with the Board of Selectmen to request a liaison to this working group to explore the consolidation under the town and to look at existing MOAs and policies and other models that are out there and see what might be able to work, potential barriers that may be in place that relates to Maynard. The current makeup, the school committee, at their last school committee meeting, selected Justin Hem to serve as their representative. In addition to the school committee representative would be Pete DeChico, the school business manager. I've asked Andrew to lead up this initiative from the town side of things, as well as they're looking at having a representative, one of the principals from the school, whether that be potentially, wasn't likely gonna be the high school principal, but either the middle school or elementary school principal, and then also a union member of the custodial staff to sit on that. Justin brings another unique perspective in that he is also a teacher and teaches in another school district, so he brings not only his hat as a school committee member, but also as a teacher. So again, we don't anticipate this being a long working group by any means. It'd be a very limited, somewhat limited scope in the sense of minimal meetings, but get everybody in the same room, hash out barriers that are in place, and potentially develop a, an MOA that would be agreeable, that would fit Maynard and potentially be agreeable to both the school committee and the Board of Selectmen. This type of thing isn't as, you know, clean, it's pretty, it's pretty much the sense there needs to be a memorandum of agreement in place because the statute in place that dictates responsibility of schools to principals, which they ultimately are sort of the business, the building manager of the facility, and there's some of that needs to be accounted for, which is accounted for in that MOA. So we're not, it doesn't need to be an actual formal appointment or vote, but just a, if looking at if there's a member of the Board of Selectmen that's interested in serving this role, I don't wanna volunteer Jason, but he is the representative to the town leadership and is familiar with the goal of the working group, but that's what we're seeking tonight.
Any indication of when they plan to have, hold their meetings?
No, we didn't, we haven't discussed that.
The first step was to try, was to effectively select liaisons to go into it. I certainly can do it. I don't know if there's any value in having another member step into that role, since I'm the liaison to the school committee. There's a benefit to separating those duties.
I don't think there would be conflict in it.
Oh, no. I'm not worried about that.
Feel free.
It also gives anybody a chance if they wanna get more involved. I mean, effectively, the goal of this is to allow the, is to pull some of these custodial and maintenance tasks over to, to the, to the town, under the facilities manager, or something to that effect. That will be, that's what's gonna be discussed, in order to let the school committee and the schools, you know, focus on education.
When do they typically meet?
That was the question. Maybe nobody has said yet.
It hasn't been set up. We meet with, as far as a leadership meeting, you know, we set that accordingly. It's not a set meeting. This group, they just appointed, recommended Justin last Thursday, and we're here to look for another member. I don't know who their principal representative or their custodial representative is going to be. Of course, other than the BOs rep and the school committee rep, everybody else is available during the day, and they're employees of the town, including, you know, Pete DeChico and all those folks. I don't know if they can get a custodian rep back here for an evening without.
That's, I'm assuming that they're going to wanna meet during the day.
Yeah, that would be my assumption, there'd have to be some sort of flexibility.
And that eliminates my.
During the day.
My availability.
Yeah.
I can be available during most days, necessary. You've already favored with the school committee, and you want.
Yeah, he already is. Chris, if you're interested, that's great. Otherwise, if you guys, if you guys are okay, I can, I can continue on.
Well, you can continue on if you have, if you need me to, I'll gladly step in.
Okay, that'd be good. One other quick question, is DPW also represented there? There was some talk from the school committee.
The custodial side, no, but the, we've talked about that in turn. We've looked in, we've looked at two models, whether it be.
Grounds are included.
Grounds and buildings, certainly isn't, it would be an easy member to add, to have representation there.
The conversation heads that way, maybe then.
Probably, to some degree, there is overlap, because the custodian, we would need to account for that, because the existing custodian staff, one and a half of those employees is essentially grounds. One is a full-time, the other half is seasonal. So there is that discussion. It may be that it just stays with them and just being supervised by the town, but facilities manager doesn't handle grounds. He is responsible for the buildings. But, yeah, we can talk about that, Andrew, and I figure out what, you know, maybe it may not be consistent, but maybe if the meeting, the, a meeting following is going to deal with that, we can have them, invite them for that meeting.
Okay.
I wouldn't be posted in meetings or anything. It's an informal working group.
All right, so you said you don't need a motion or anything for that?
No, we don't want.
Okay, so I guess then put me as primary and Chris as sort of vice.
Thank you.
No problem. And I think the next item is the 7:30 public hearing, so it looks like we have about three minutes before that.
Am I able to do the appointments, the liaison assignments, real quick? I think this is pretty, shouldn't be much of a discussion, there's only two members left, and only so many.
No, no, I saw, I saw the other one, I skipped the second half of that.
I think, how many are remaining that we don't have assigned? Public safety.
Was that dropped in Dropbox? Dropped, no pun intended. Was that placed in Dropbox, the list? I know Bill had it earlier.
We had that list, yeah, I wasn't.
I didn't see it.
I didn't see it either.
I think, I thought Becky had it in the packet itself. Was this in the?
This was in the packet.
Yeah.
It was in the packet? Okay.
Just flip to that real quick.
It's down here at the bottom of the packet.
Okay.
But it doesn't list the remaining committees. I think most of them that are on here, with the exception of, yeah, I think most of it was just heavier load to Gavin and Creel than what we originally had. I think you picked up some of, I know Jason picked up Brendan's, one of Brendan's.
Oh, you're looking at the liaison?
Jason picked up school.
Yeah.
There it is.
Yeah, there it is. So Gavin has council on aging, FinCom, planning board, cultural council. Creel has conservation commission, historic, board of assessors, school committee, and I'm a slacker with library and community preservation. And I'd be happy to yield community preservation to Tim, since he has some experience in that. It'd like he'd be a good liaison. And I'd be happy to pick up another second one, maybe economic development committee, something like that. But, yeah, I said the, Chris and Tim, I mean, what interest you have on liaison to other committees, and pardon me if it's already been said, but in general, the liaison objective is to keep us informed of what's going on in the committees, and if those committees need assistance from town hall, then try to coordinate that with Kevin.
Did you say, Kevin, there was some open, anyway?
Yeah, I think, looking at it, recreation commission is open. The green communities committee, economic development committee was one that we haven't had prior. This would be the first year. And I think that's it, very quick, as far as what's remaining. There was, there was, each, each of you took one additional one that you were talking about potentially giving back, so.
Yeah, if, Chris, if you're interested in the ones on my list, I would prefer to keep, I served on finance committee, and I have a relationship with them that's longstanding. And because of my interest in the council on aging and the cultural council is why I had those on there as well.
So you leave me to the planning board?
If you want the planning board.
I can certainly do that, and I can also do either the recreation or the green community, is that what you said?
Yeah, the green communities committee. That one's been very much, much more infrequent, kind of on demand.
I can do those three, planning, recreation, and green community, if you'd like.
Did you say there was public safety, or was I hearing things?
Yeah, no, I think I was confusing the committee boards with, with what we had used to do previously. That was the finance committee.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we used to do the budget subcommittee we had.
Right, exactly.
Maybe Chris wants to give up.
Jason, is there anything you need help with?
Effectively, right now, I mean, with this changed night school, I guess I'll hang in there with school and assessor, so if you would be interested in either the historical commission or conservation, I tell you, conservation is easy, 'cause they meet at the same time we do.
Historical probably has a good overlap with CPC as well.
They both do, 'cause John Black.
And CONSCOM, yeah.
Either or.
Yeah, if you.
I think conservation.
All right, we all sit on that?
So just to clarify, Tim, you're gonna do historical?
CONSCOM.
Or CONSCOM?
You said conservation overlaps with this?
With, yeah, with your BOs schedule.
We have no idea. When does historical meet?
It's, you don't have to, you don't have to attend the meeting.
They'll just, you'll be copied on the email agendas and stuff.
Okay, we'll stick with conservation then.
Okay.
Yeah, you're just keeping us surprised at what they're doing, and then you're helping them out if they need to coordinate with town hall. But there's no need to attend. Well, let's not give a difference.
Shouldn't be here three nights a week?
I would somehow.
Alright. So we're all set on that?
We're good.
That one, very good. Alright, so, time being 7:30, uh, we have a public hearing scheduled. And that public hearing is for a tax classification hearing. And I'm going to read the legal notice, and then we'll vote to go into the hearing. Notice is as follows. As required by Massachusetts general law, chapter 40, section 56, the Maynard Board of Selectmen will hold their annual fiscal year 2015 tax classification hearing on Tuesday, November 18, 2014, at 7:30 PM in the Michael J. G. Anodis Meeting Room at the Maynard Town Building. The purpose of the hearing is to determine the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real property the public is welcoming to attend. So I'll make a motion to enter into the fiscal 2015 tax classification hearing, open that hearing.
Second.
Open the second. All in favor of opening the hearing? Alright. As an introduction to this hearing, uh, we're here to do, the Board of Selectmen is required by state law to act on a couple of tax rate policies. There's three specific things we have to consider in setting tax rates. One is whether we want to do a residential exemption, which basically means that the owner occupied housing in town is, has their real estate tax bills subsidized by the residential owners who live out of town. The other thing required to act on is a small commercial exemption, and that's where a choice is made whether some very small commercial businesses are, have their tax bills subsidized by larger commercial businesses. And then the big one that we do is the classification shift, whether the town should have a single tax rate or a split tax rate. And a split tax rate would have all business properties paying a surcharge so that they subsidize the tax bills of all residential properties. And we have the Board of Assessors and the Assistant Assessor here to provide us with a presentation to help us in our considerations of those. So if you guys would step forward, introduce yourselves to the record, and lead off on your presentation.
Okay. My name is Angie. I'm the assessor.
Can you come up to the table, Angie, just, the microphone's there?
This is the new selectman tonight. So.
Can you introduce the board members, too?
Um, I know Steve is here and Terrence is here.
Terrence Donovan.
And not Chris. We also have a new board member, Chris Worley, on our Board of Assessors. Steve's been on the board for quite some time, and Terrence is feeling new as well. I have sent you the packet, the first page. We're just going to go through the packet because that's the easiest for us to do. And if anyone has questions, they can just interrupt me and ask.
Yeah, um, in regards to questions, um, we'll probably have to figure out a way to divvy this up, but it's a public hearing, so there'll probably be questions from the board. Uh, we'll probably be sometimes seeking opinion from staff. Um, then we'll go to the audience, and the board might finish up the questions, so. We might be able to break it up into little pieces.
I was kind of thinking that if these, if the new selectmen have, as we go through this, questions, but whatever. It's, you can handle that part of it. We do this usually this time of year. And basically, we're at the point where Department of Revenue has certified our values, our growth. Um, I have had our DOR rep for the recap, which is where the valuation and the budget go together and spit out a tax rate. Andrew Nelson has come in. He's reviewed that. Everything looks really good. I do have the excess levy sheet here tonight for the board to sign, once we determine our new split. Here in Maynard, we, as assessors, we assess property based on new additions, changes. We did vote to go up to June 30th. Not all cities and towns do that, but we do that here in Maynard. And that process is done by your assessors. We go out, we do inspections, we gather all the data, we calculate our growth, and that is certified by the DOR. And that occurs each and every fiscal year. And our fiscal year runs July 1 to June 30th, so we're in fiscal 15 right now. I gave a little sheet on the levy limits and what all of that means as far as budgeting, with, um, what we're allowed to go up to as far as raising the taxes, which is our 2.5 percent, and how we get to that.
Angie, if you could, when you, you reference the sheets that you've provided the board, can you try to reference the page numbers?
That was page three. Um, page four, Bill kind of explained quite nicely what we're here to do tonight. We have three options that you'd have to vote on, the residential exemption, the small commercial exemption, and then, of course, the big one, which is how we're going to determine what portion of the taxes is paid by your commercial, industrial, and personal property accounts, and what portion of the taxes will be paid by your residential properties. Page five is the residential exemption, which once again, Bill explained quite simply. It's a shift within the residential exemptions, um, I mean, within the residential properties. And it is shifted to the, the non-occupied properties by the owner and higher-end properties in Maynard, so that if you do, you could go up to 20% of that particular levy, of whatever is supposed to be raised within the residential portion. And you take the lower-end homes, and they get a discount. And the higher-end homes, homes, and the homes that are not owner-occupied pay the difference. But it's a shift within the residential exemption. I do list on the sheet the 13 communities currently in Massachusetts that do that. Um, and as you can see, many of them have many, many apartments. We do have a lot of apartments in Maynard, but I don't think that all of them are, are not owner-occupied. Our board and, and the town of Maynard has not ever in the past voted for this exemption. I, if we can, take a break and, and have a discussion, maybe, and, and take the vote on this residential exemption. And then we'll move to the next exemption.
Uh, yeah, um, so questions from the board about that residential exemption? Uh, there's a pretty good explanation in the packet on page five about that.
Pretty, uh, just a simple, and maybe it's a, uh, it's a simplified question, but when you say owner-occupied for a, for an apartment, if somebody owns, say, four apartment, for a building that has four apartments in it, if the owner lives in one of those, is the entire complex considered owner-occupied?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, do we have any questions from the audience about the residential exemption?
Uh, yes, I think Downey, Howard wrote, I would recommend against doing that because if you slow it all down, the owner, even if they live in another town, is going to just jack up the rents to cover what you do. And so it is a very regressive tax, winds up hurting the people who don't have any property ownership in the situation. And so they wind up getting more out of their pockets. I think it is something that we really shouldn't do with the town.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board? In that case, I'll make a motion to vote no, to reject the residential exemption for fiscal year 2015. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
We're watching a second. Any further discussion? And a yes vote here will say no residential exemption, which is consistent with what we've done in past years. All in favor of the motion? Motion passing, you asked me. Excuse me, Angie, um, sorry to jump in here, but I've been taken ill, and I'm going to have to yield to the, uh, the clerk for probably the rest of the meeting. I'm going to be in and out, but I'll let Jason run the rest of the meeting. Although, I would suggest, Jason, that you might want to have David run the rest of this hearing, since he has a little experience in the hearings.
Certainly. I wasn't expecting that. I don't think Bill was either.
No. So, okay, um, we will move on then to the small commercial exemption.
Okay. The small commercial exemption is another option which is allowed through the state that shifts the portion of the commercial tax that's to be paid within the commercial properties. We have a list from the Department of Labor and Workforce Development that lists companies or businesses in town that earn less than a million dollars and have 10 or more people at the location. This, again, is a, a shift within the commercial. We already have a shift with the regular tax rate that shifts quite a bit of the taxes to commercial. And Maynard has always not voted this exemption in as well. I do have, there's only 10 communities in the whole state that utilize this exemption. And, um, once again, I would say, uh, the board is recommending a no vote. I should say, no exemption.
Yes. Angie, just a question. What do those communities that, um, that do adopt this exemption, what, what do they see as the benefit to their community?
I'm not sure. I've never spoken to any of those communities. Why or how they feel splitting that rate within the commercial properties benefits the community. Uh, from the looks of it, they do have a lot of business. I would say, you know, they're fairly, uh, Braintree, Wrentham, Auburn, Avon, they're fairly big cities. I've never really had a discussion with them, Dave, to ask them why they would choose that.
A lot of those particular communities have large clusters, particularly Avon has a large industrial park. Braintree has the Selsho Plaza Mall. Wrentham has the Wrentham Premium Outlets. Same with Seekonk and Somerset. There's some bigger.
Westford.
Yeah, and Westford as well. There's some rationale as to, I think, even with, even with Dartmouth as well, where they're looking at.
Yep.
The only one that doesn't fit is New Ashford.
Yeah, right.
Okay. I will then, I will make a motion that the Board of.
Do you want to open up any discussion or questions?
Any questions on it or comments? Then I will make a motion to, uh, to follow the assessor's recommendation and rec, and have the board recommend a no vote on the small commercial exemption. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion from the board? So, as Bill just said, for the previous one, a yes vote here will be a no on the exemption. So all those in favor? Motion carries 4-0.
Okay. Page seven is the actual, um, big discussion of this meeting tonight. We do have a split rate in the town of Maynard. We're currently at 1.37. Based on our levy limit and our levy ceiling, we can go up to the 1.5%, 5.0%. Um, I do have the sheets. Uh, page eight shows you that. Eight and nine shows you the, um, which is all done with the Department of Revenue through Gateway. Everything's computerized these days. But that, this is the sheet that will, I mean, I'll mark what it is that we're going to choose tonight. So we can go up to the 150. Uh, page 10 is your levy. It shows you, um, 2014, what the levy limit was. And then that is carried forward to calculate the 2015 levy. We added in the 2.5%. We added in the growth. Uh, that gives us a new levy, um, limit. That is carried forward, and we also get to add in the debt exclusion. And that number, the 27, 564, 948, is the number that, the limit to what we can raise in taxes. And page 11, I've given you some considerations. I do list these here. Because your percentage of commercial is decreasing. You'll see that in a few pages down. But consider the percentage of commercial industrial properties compared to your residential. Will the increase, uh, on the commercial and industrial significantly lower the residential rate? You know, what is that comparison? How much of your properties are big business and how much is small business? You know, I think in Maynard, we, we probably have more small businesses today than we do large. What types of businesses, you know, and do they use a lot of municipal services? And, you know, so forth. You can see what the considerations that need to be given to how you split this tax burden. I do give you partial count by property class. Uh, property class is the type of property that it is. We use the state codes. That's all on, required by the state. Um, you can see that our count has, does go up. This year, we have a total of 4,314, um, real estate, personal property accounts. Last year, we had 4,032. Progress is good. This is the, on page 13, I give the total of Maynard's percentage share. It shows you the percentage of residential and the percentage of commercial, industrial, and personal property. And it was, I would say, in 2011, 12, 13, 14, we're all around, you know, the 2, 1280 and the 1270%. We're down to 1217. Basically, what that is, um, we did have a couple of mixed-use properties that had a business in-house, and it's no longer being used as a business. It's all residential now. You do have properties that change their use, and assessors go by use, not by zone. So that is coming down a little bit, and I do give you a little visual. If you need to see the, um, on page 14 gives you our percentage by year of what our residential is, which is the low one, I'm sorry, the high one. And the low one is your commercial, industrial, and personal property. It's just a visual of the sheet previous to that. On page 15, I'm giving you the valuation from last year to this year by class of property. So your 101s are your single families, your 102 are your condominiums. This valuation reflects sales and new construction in the town, and you can see that we were increasing, which is a very good sign.
I have a question. On page, back to page 12.
Yeah.
The last, second to last column, personal property.
Yeah.
You go from, in 2013, you're 277, down to 221, but back up to 276. What, what happened in 2014 that that number dropped by 50 and then increased by 55 again? Do you know?
Well, I know for this year, we added in all the personal property accounts at the mill because they were on a TIF. And the TIF expired last June, but because of the timeframe for assessing businesses, personal property, which is businesses, uh, we couldn't pick the mill up until this year. So that number, I think the 221 is a valid number because we also voted in an exemption that we voted that said, if you have $2,000 or less of assets in your business, you're not going to get a personal property tax bill. So that's why it went down. But it went back up because, which it would stay there, but because we added all the businesses from the mill, it went back up.
Okay. Thank you.
So on valuation, you can see that the market is picking up. Commercial is down a little bit, industrial's down a little bit. A lot of that has to do with the change in use of some property. A lot of that has to do with the change in use of some properties. Page 16 is a history of our tax rates. So, you can see on the top of the page, I don't like to go all the way back to 2000, but it's there. But if you, if you look at, like, our last, 2010, we had our revow. The residential rate went up $1.63, commercial went up 208. You know, in '11, it went up $1.36. You can see last year, our residential rate went up $2.24. Our commercial rate went up $2.73. So, that gives you a picture of where the rate is going. And the rate is what you pay per thousand of value. Underneath that, I give you the 352 communities. Out of the 352 communities, for an example, in 2015, 110 have a split rate. The rest have a single rate. I give you the commercial, industrial, and personal property percentage. You can see that it is, has come down. What's allowed, which is our 1.5 this year, it's one, you know, that's as big as we can go. And then, the shift, this is what we've chosen, or what I should say, you gentlemen have chosen. In 2009, it was 1.5, then 1.47, 1.44, 39, 39, 37. So, you can see that the board seems to be wanting to come down a little bit on that division. 17 gives you a visual of that, of what the dollar amount per tax rate was that changed. We can see last year, commercial and residential really did go up. A lot of that is from the school. We added the debt in for the school, the new school. That gives you a visual of that. I also, on page 18, I give you a little bit of what other towns are doing. The town of Stowe, Conkin, Acton, Sudbury, Hudson, Wayland, Lincoln, and Barksboro. Some of them are our direct butters, others were added to the list because the selectmen were interested in that, like Hudson, even though it's not in a butter. I don't know who it was, but at one point, someone asked me to add that to the list. You can see that, what I look at on this particular sheet is the percentage of value of your commercial, industrial, and personal property, and whether or not they have a split rate. So, if you just go across the list, and if we look down at 2014, not at the top, but at the bottom, you see that Stowe, which is our neighbor, has 9% commercial, industrial, and personal property, and they have a single rate. Conkin has 9.4% commercial. I'm gonna just say CIP, okay? You guys will know what I'm saying when I say CIP? They have 9.4% CIP, and they have a single rate. Acton has 12.6, they have a single rate. Sudbury has 6.7, and they have a split rate. Hudson, 18.6 CPI, CIP, and they have a split rate. Wayland, 1830, 5.5 has a single rate. Lincoln, with only 3.7% of CIP, has a split rate. And then, Barksboro, that has 25%, has a single rate. So, there's a little bit of variety there on the split rate and the single rate, but it gives you some idea of what other cities and towns are doing. Page 19 is the LA 4. That gives you the valuation. That's what's submitted by the Board of Assessors and has been approved by the DOR. That gives you our total value by class and our exempt value. That's property that's owned by the town. What churches are exempt to? Or the schools. 20 and 21 is the LA 13. That gives you your new growth. That is also been approved by the Department of Revenue. That gives you your values changes from one year to the next, and your growth. And yes, we did very well with growth this year. We got $365,862 in growth. That's really good. Page 22 and 23 are two years' worth of, the first page is 2014, which is our debt, excluded debt, sorry, which was 2.643. And then, I also have the 15 debt, which is 2.595. So, our debt is coming down, which is a good thing. But we have debt, a lot of debt. But so do most cities and towns. It does play a role in it. As you saw on our levy, it is added in. The excluded debt does get added into what can be collected in taxes. Page 24 is our single-family tax bill. We use "single family" because that's what the state uses, and a lot of cities and towns use it to judge what's happening with the tax bill, as far as what we pay in taxes of higher wealth. So, you can see that in Maynard, for 2014, I give you the total value. I give you the total number of single houses. The average value was 287, 770. The tax rate was 2229. The tax bill was 6,414. That was a $318 increase from the year before. That's a 5% change. We ranked 57 in the state out of 338 communities reporting. We were 57th with the highest tax bill, the single-family house. We used to be a lot higher, if you look at the list. We are coming down. So, I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but it is what it is. So, then I take that, I also put the state average for fiscal '14 up there. So, the state average value was 355, 314. So, we're a little lower than that in the state. But the tax rate was 14. You can see the difference in the tax rate. And the reason we got that is because our tax rate's high. So, the average tax bill was $5,020 statewide. That's kind of a really, not a good, I think, gauge for anything, really, because there's such diversity, so many different types of properties.
Angie, was that the state, was that a state average for 2014?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Then I give you a little visual on page 25 of the single-family tax bill.
Just on page 25, for future. When I look at trend charts, I read them typically left to right, not right to left. And in my eyes, somebody looking at this sees a false impression of what the trend is for us. The trend is not--
I do that subconsciously.
I, perhaps, but--
Okay. So, you want me to reverse that?
Yeah, I think it should show an accurate trend.
Well, if you just, you could see that our taxes have gone up a little bit every year for our single-family homes. Page 26 is a spreadsheet that shows a single family with five-year, and it gives you the state and it gives you Maynard. The state being the dotted red line, and Maynard being the solid green line, from 2004 to 2014.
Now, that's a proper trend chart.
Okay. And then, page 27 and 28 is basically the downtown district. I was asked one year to add this to the packet, in that it shows, you know, I think the residents of Maynard love their little downtown. It's a very unique downtown, and everyone's concerned about the businesses downtown and what this split does to these businesses. So, I have given you a map that shows you what our downtown district is. And then, behind it, I've given you a list of all the downtown properties. This gives you the current value, and I've given you six tax rates, or tax splits, that the board is recommending tonight, with the 1.33 highlighted, because if we had to pick one, that's probably the one that we would pick. But we're not picking it, you are. So, and then I give you a couple of sheets of definition. And I think what we really want to look at is the last several pages, because that's your sheet that gives you all the different options that you have tonight. I've given you the eight and a half by 11 is the, all 50 choices that we have to make tonight. The tax rate versus tax bill, which I don't have numbered, but it should be at the, I think it's in the beginning of these big pages. That's giving you the five, six, I think it's six, choices. Really, there's seven.
Seven.
Seven choices that the board has recommended. And I'm telling you what the rate choice is, what the tax bill will be, which, again, is the average single-family tax bill compared to what it was last year. And I also, there's two pages to that, because I also took the average commercial, the CIP value, and gave you that same configuration of what it is, what it was last year, and what the different choices, the seven choices, would do to that tax bill. And that's also an average. It's all of those properties averaged together. So, I'm sure that you all had an opportunity to look at these. And if you look at page 34, which is the last page in your packet, you can see that the current rate split is 1.37. That gave us a residential tax rate of 2229, and a commercial, industrial, and personal property tax rate of 3228. The Board of Assessors, after reviewing all of this data, has made a, is recommending the 1.33 split for this year. That would, in an essence, increase the residential tax rate by 2 cents and decrease the commercial tax rate by $1.19. Even though it's reducing the tax rate, if you look at the two sheets that I gave you that don't have page numbers on them, that are the short ones, you can see that with the 1.33, and with the new valuation, the average single-family tax bill would go up But considering what it's been doing, that's really not that bad. And then, your commercial, which I have on the second page, with that same choice, the 1.33, would come down from almost $11,000 to $9,300, roughly. But I think this is a discussion that you gentlemen need to have on where you want that rate to sit. We've always talked about closing that gap between, and eventually being a single-rate town. I do put the single rate on here, and with the added growth that we received this year, the tax rate would, for residential, would go up $1.9. Last year, it went up $2, and if you refer to page, let's find that page. It's page 16. Last year, the tax rate for the residential went up $2.24. So, going up $1.9 is not unreasonable.
It's just a small piece.
That would give us a single tax rate in the town, which would be 2338. The year before that, we went up $1.60 in the residential tax rate and 238 in residential. So, you know, like I said, this is a decision that's made by the Board of Selectmen. So, I think if you guys have any questions, I'd like to pose what I have to say and hear what you have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Angie.
Yeah.
And thank you to the board for your work as well. I'll open it up for comments or questions from the board members. Whoever wants to toss out the first question, feel free.
We need that. I got one. You said we're split, correct?
I'm sorry, what?
Did I hear that? You said we're split rate, right?
Yes, we are. 1.37.
How far back did we decide that? When did that originally happen?
That's a very good question, Tim. And I don't have any answer for that. I actually talked about that this morning with the gentleman that does our retirement, because he has been around here for a very long time, and he thinks it was in the 80s. And I was trying to determine how I would know that, and I think if I went back to the town reports, I could actually find that out. But I don't, I don't know that answer.
Mr. Downey?
I can tell you it was approximately in 1980s we adopted the first year that it was permissible under state law, and it stems back to a suit that was filed by the town of Maynard against Digital득 Corporation, which goes back into the 70s for many one of the Maynard Paya lock you share in taxes.
Thank you.
Would you, I'm sorry, is that Mr. Downey?
Yes.
Would you say that's early 80s? Early 80s?
Yeah.
Okay. I can find out, Jim, and let you know.
84 for some reason. That's what my brain is telling me.
Chris, do you have any questions?
I do not. Angie, just to clarify, if we leave the, if we leave the rate as it is, the split as it is right now, the increase in the average bill is, just over last year, is what?
$226.57, 54 cents.
Okay.
It would be an 11-cent decrease in the rate, but because values will not, if you look at that sheet that doesn't have any numbers, you can see that the average single-family in '14 was 287, 770. But the average single-family value in '15 is 299,411. And that's quite common. That's how taxes work. Values go up, tax rate comes down. You still pay a little more. Values go up, tax rate comes down, you're still paying a little more. So, with the current rate at 1.37, the average single-family tax bill would be $226.54 more than what they paid the year before.
What page are you looking on right now?
It doesn't have a number. It's those two sheets.
The first of the blank pages, Chris. So, it's like--
Sorry, I did this at the last minute. Next year, this will be part of the packet, and we'll have numbers.
Okay.
Tax rate.
Yeah.
Tax rate versus--
Tax bill.
I was hoping that, you know, I'm disappointed, I wanted to hear, Bill had presented to us a document that outlines a suggestion that he had regarding a way that we can approach the tax bill, or the meeting our levy this year. And I don't know, I know he's out in the hallway. Bill, do you feel well enough to be able to comment on your email? Sorry, but I wanted--
Part of this hearing tonight is to determine the split rate, SIF shift, and, you know, that's the vote. The vote will be to say, what will be the SIF shift? Will it be 1.37? Will it be 1.33? Will it be 1.2? Whatever. We have to decide that. But before people's tax bills get calculated using that SIF shift, I think there's one other thing we should consider, and that is just how much tax revenue we want to raise. And I think we're in a rather unique situation here tonight, in that we may not have to raise the maximum amount of taxes, of real estate taxes. We may be able to raise less and still balance our budget. The way it works is that when we set the budget in May, we're doing it based on estimated revenues. And the big, the big three are real estate taxes, local receipts, and local aid. And we try to make the best guess as possible, those revenues in May, but they're not entirely done. The local aid number's not finalized until June or even July. And, you know, the potential tax revenues based on new growth isn't known until the assessors crank all the numbers in September or October. And then, of course, local receipts aren't known until the end of the coming year. But we have some good indicators. Our local aid estimate proved to be a tiny bit lower than actual, so we got some extra local aid. It turned out, as mentioned earlier, that our new growth number for new development in town was much higher than we assumed. And then, as far as local receipts go, it appears that for the last few years, we've been trying to be very conservative, and we've been so conservative that we've been underestimating local receipts by a lot. Last year, we, you know, estimated one number, and the actual number came in half a million dollars higher in local receipts. And we're talking mostly excise taxes, but we're talking trash sticker fees, we're talking people who pay interest because they pay late, parking meter receipts, all that stuff. So last year, when we cranked the numbers at the end of the year, we was like, wow, we underestimated by five hundred thousand dollars. The year before, we underestimated by four hundred thousand dollars. The current numbers we have in place now for our assumption to a balanced budget is less than we actually picked up last year. And normally, it's a good practice to be conservative, because it's tough to estimate money you haven't gotten in. But given that the big driver here is excise taxes, we've been very careful in underestimating those. And, you know, our current estimate of, our current assumption of excise tax revenue is less than any year back to 2010. It's a couple hundred thousand dollars less than we actually got last year. And given that gas is down to three bucks and car sales are up double digits, I think we got a good chance of at least achieving what we did last year. So, big picture here is I'm suggesting that we have a chance of, if we, before we finalize our tax bill and do what's called a recap sheet, we adjust our assumptions on local receipts up by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That means we will still be able to balance the budget if we lower the amount of taxes we want to collect by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And to do that would have a pretty significant impact. It would roughly reduce everybody's tax bill compared to not doing that by one percent. Like sixty bucks on the average single family. And you think maybe...
On the split?
Even with the split, I mean, it's just one percent. It's one percent less taxes we'd be collecting. So it's one percent across the board for any particular split we choose. But, you know, one percent, some people might say that's not a lot, sixty bucks a year. But it really adds up, because it's a permanent decrease. It's not collected this year, it's not collected next year. And, and actually, when you compare it to some of our economic development initiatives and trying to get commercial properties in town to, to help subsidize the tax rates, it makes a big difference, because one thing I noticed in the data that was handed out by Angie is that, take for example, CVS Downtown. You know, they pay forty-four thousand dollars a year in taxes. So if we were to collect two hundred and fifty thousand less in taxes this year, to assess that on real estate taxes, that would be like we just built five new CVSs, and that subsidized our, our real estate taxes. So, big picture is that I'm suggesting, in addition to deciding about the SIF shift, we also decide that we want to reduce our, our maximum allowable tax levy by a quarter million dollars in order to minimize the increases in everybody's tax bills.
Bill, if I may, under your scenario, if the prognosticators are wrong in the other direction, where instead, although the trend has been for the last five years, we have underestimated local receipts, but 2015 ends out to be the year that we overestimated local receipts, and we have that gap, would your proposal be that we then make up that gap in the budget with free cash that's available next year or whatever? From the current, you know, the current level of free cash, or from that bucket of money? Where would that come from?
That's a good point. We do currently have one point eight million dollars in free cash from closing out the books last year that we have not yet allocated, that we could theoretically allocate and spend as soon as we could put a town meeting together. So we do have that insurance policy. But it's just, you're looking at all the trends, it seems like a pretty safe bet, because, you know, it's not just excise taxes, it's, trash sticker numbers are way up, because nobody's stealing the money anymore. And a lot of other things are a positive sign. Big picture for me, though, is that, you know, I'd rather collect the taxes we need rather than the taxes we can collect. And frankly, you know, the taxpayers probably need a break, and I think this is the one chance we have of doing it. Taxes will still go up, but they just won't go up as much.
I could just intercede, please. Splitting the tax rate is a difficult decision, as it is. And whether or not you collect more in local receipts is not an issue that we're here to decide tonight. I do know that when you're doing the recap, there is a requirement by the Department of Revenue on how you estimate local receipts. It's not just up for grabs to do whatever you want. There is a guideline that needs to be followed. Our town accountant does take care of that. DOR rep, public DOR, has been in already and reviewed the recap, and has given us the go, that it is looking good. I think if this is something that you want to think about, it should be done at budget time, not when you're trying to determine how we're going to divvy out what portion of taxes will be paid by commercial, industrial, and personal property, and what portion will be paid by real estate people. Everybody wants their tax bill lowered. I totally agree with Bill. I just don't think this is the place to do that. I'm not sure if the selectmen have an option of determining that. And if they do, I believe it would be at budgeting time, which our budget for fifteen has already been passed and voted on. This is to set the tax rate and the tax bills for fifteen. So the amount that we need to collect has already been determined by our budget, it's already been voted on. To try to shift that within, we're not going to collect any less, we still have to collect that same amount. It's shifting it from local receipts to taxes through real estate, which is your residential, commercial, and industrial properties. I'm not sure how that all works. But for this evening, I feel comfortable and confident that the Board should pick a rate. And if that's a discussion that the Board of Selectmen want to have at a later date, I just would warn that the recap has to get submitted to the DOR. It has to get approved by the DOR before we can issue tax bills. I have to create that file with the assessment information. And tax bills, in order for us to, because we're quarterly, have to be in the mail by December 31st. I know that sounds like a long time, but you have Thanksgiving, and you have Christmas, and we have to create the file, it has to go to, there's a process that's quite lengthy. Three or four companies are involved in creating our tax bills for us and getting them in the mail. We usually like a good three weeks, if not more, so that we can do this process. So timing is, in essence, when we do this, at this classification hearing. So to all of a sudden want to change how everything has been established, it makes me not, it makes me a little worried that we won't get our tax bills out on time.
Yeah, I, I hear you, but the, in fairness, Bill has been mentioning this as a possibility for at least two or three meetings.
If I may, I mean, there is, you were kind enough to do an analysis showing what would happen to tax breaks if it was two hundred and fifty thousand less than the levy. And we do have to keep in mind that, you know, there's two different things here. We can determine the SIF shift...
That's all we're supposed to do here.
Without understanding the levy. Right.
That's all I'm here for.
The Board of Selectmen are also in charge of figuring out how much people have to pay in taxes, and they're in charge of figuring out where those revenues are coming from. And you are correct in that the local receipts have to be approved by the DOR. And, of course, they require an explanation of any local receipt that is changing by plus or minus ten percent over the prior year. I would point out that the prior year currently is five hundred thousand dollars more than our estimate. I'm asking only that we increase it by two fifty. So we're already still two hundred and fifty thousand less than the prior year. So if anything, they're going to ask us why we're so low.
They did not ask us. He's already come in and reviewed it and did not ask that.
So, but the point is, there's two different things we're talking about here. The SIF shift is one, and we'll do that. But the Board also has the ability to adjust the tax levy, assuming, assuming we're confident that the budget will be balanced, and I certainly am.
And that tax bills will be able to get mailed out on time.
Yes, well, I mean, it's just a simple change of number in a spreadsheet, and it pops right through.
No, it's not as simple. It has to be approved, has to be submitted to the DOR, and they review it. And if they're not happy with it, it comes back, and we have to make the change based on what they agree to.
And I think the taxpayers deserve the chance to pay less money.
I'm not saying that. I think it's a wonderful idea, but I just think it's something that maybe should be brought up while you're budgeting your...
Rather than having a debate back and forth, I do want to yield for a sec.
What you said is incorrect. The ten percent will, prior to my coming here, you didn't even have a history back in life. So what we did is, I created that history, okay?
The history on the...
Colloquial receipts.
The local receipts and the deltas.
Local aid, that goes back to nineteen eighty-one, things like that. Oh, I'm the town accountant. One of the things you have to, they also look at is prior history. So in other words, yes, you may say, well, we can do it by ten percent. But they'll go back and look, and they'll say, wait a minute, you know, you've never done more than X amount of dollars. For instance, let's use the town of Concord. They had a bigger increase than we did. And yet, they're only increasing it by something seventy-five thousand dollars. So I'm not saying it can't be done, but I did an analysis for Kevin as to what, if you wanted to do that, what you could increase it by and have DOR approve it. And I think we came up with, I think, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, some give or take.
Versus the two fifty.
Versus the two fifty. It could be done. I'll give you some recommendations that would probably go along with what you're saying, though. In the town of Boxville, in seven years, local receipts will increase by a hundred thousand dollars. Tax rate went down by a dollar fifty. Taxes went down by two million dollars. How did you do it? By using a similar technique that you have, that he's recommending. But the decision to do that was made at a budget time. Everybody wants to see taxes. For instance, if we were to go ahead and do what he's saying, and say we did that next year, and we said, let's increase it by two hundred and fifty thousand. What we could then do is, when we do the budget, we'll decrease two hundred and fifty thousand in taxes right off the bat. What that means is that if you do nothing, regardless of what you do next year, your taxes, your taxes will go down by two hundred and fifty thousand. If you make a decision and say, let's put new growth in, let's say a hundred thousand. If you do four hundred thousand, you can say, we will not, anything that's in excess of whatever we budget automatically goes to reduce the tax rate. It's making decisions ahead of time. I agree that you want to reduce the tax rate, but I think we can do the same thing and do, going forward, and do it. How do I know? I've done it. It's been done. But it makes, but you also have to cut expenses on the same process, too. There were decisions, hard decisions, that had to be made going forward. If you do what he's saying, and you do that going forward, yes, you can build into every single year a reduction in your taxes. Absolutely. For every dollar you increase in revenue in other places, you decrease it someplace else. You know, the problem has been, is that for every dollar that you increase in revenue, the town that made it has increased expenses by the same amount. Don't do that. If you say, hey, Mike, let's increase local receipts next year, three hundred thousand, and let's assume we did that, I would say, let's build into the budget three hundred thousand dollars less in tax revenue. What does that do? It reduces your tax rate right off the bat. Right off the bat, your taxes are reduced by three hundred thousand, because what you're doing is you're substituting it with other, other places. I mean, can it be done? Yeah. I mean, you know, you do run some, you know, risks. But for instance, one of the things you have to be aware of this year, we stand to lose over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in local aid if they do the cuts. Where is that going to, I have no, I could tell you where it's not going to come from. That's an issue you have to look at, too. Where are you going to come up, if you do, were to do that this year, where would the revenue come from?
I assume you're saying it's not coming from education.
Right. I'm saying, you know, you know, I'm assuming that it's going to, if they do it, it'll be across the board. You'll have, you'll have, educational cut, get the cut, chapter seventy will get the cut, local aid to towns will get the cut. That's what they did when they had the last cut. And I'm saying, if you go on the basis of what happened in Manor, looking at the history, you stand to lose somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand. That's from the last time. And now you have a bigger slice. But I'm saying...
I've been through some ninety cut, I've been through the last round of ninety cuts, and...
See, back one of the years, too, they...
It's good to know we got one point eight million dollars in free cash.
Yeah, but the thing is, if you use free cash to fund your budget, that means the next year, you got to come up with three hundred thousand to fund the budget.
Yes, you do. I feel well aware. Yeah, I appreciate you doing the analysis, showing a hundred and seventy-five. I wish I'd seen it, but...
No, we did the point...
Big picture here is, we have this conversation every year at this time.
But why not do it?
No, we don't.
Excuse me.
Wait, 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 wait.
And we say, we're going to deal with it next year, and then we don't. So I'm setting the fence now. We deal with it now, and then we do exactly what you talk about.
But why not do it?
And we also talk about it...
But why not do it going forward? And guarantee it?
Because I've been here for fifteen years at these hearings, and every time we say we will, and then we don't.
But I wasn't here.
Can I just say that this is...
We have an opportunity...
Right, wait, wait, Bill, so, let me...
At this, this time, it's not the time to do the budget.
Do you want to share again? Or do you feel okay?
Yeah.
Do you want to take over, or do you want me?
No.
Because I'm fine with that. Go ahead, Angie.
In the six years that I've been here doing the tax rate hearing, we have not talked about lowering the amount of taxes that we want to collect. That has not been part of my discussions with the Board. I'm not saying that it's not something that can be done. I, I feel that we've always talked about lowering tax bills. Every time we meet, we do discuss that. The time, I feel, is at budget time. I think we're too close in the process. This is the second week in November, the third, we have one week left, one and a half weeks left in November, and then we need to get certified. We're not the only town submitting to the Department of Revenue. Three hundred and fifty-one communities right now are, well, I shouldn't say all three hundred and fifty, because some of them are, they build twice a year, not quarterly. We're quarterly. So all the quarterly towns are submitting right now to the Department of Revenue. It's a very crunch time.
Okay, we get, we get that point, and I want to try to move the, the meeting along. Dick?
So I think what Bill is proposing makes a lot of sense, actually, because if you, and speaking as an assessor, who's got the, the last and third years of being a professor, the recap sheet, that, all the budgets are already been established by town meeting, so he knows what that number is. And so when you do the recap sheet, you basically take that number, and we subtract out from it what those numbers are that we're going to get from receipts in various different areas, and what's left over is what we use for the tax rate. What Bill is proposing is, he's saying that there is revenue coming in, that we have a high certainty that we're going to collect. So we subtract a larger number from the budget that's being already established by town meeting, and we just divvy up that pie afterwards. So he's saying that we have prima facie evidence presented to the state that we're going to collect close to a half a billion dollars more in revenue, local receipts, excise taxes, what have you, than what has been typically put into the recap sheet. And so he has a good case with the state, and the state would be out pressed, they're very reasonable people, they would be out pressed to refuse you for being astute in your financial estimates of what you need. He has already been conservative by taking five hundred thousand dollars and cutting it in half and saying it's two hundred and fifty. Now, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Mike.
You had said that was a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
That you can legally do next year and store the...
An excess amount of money should even things go badly.
Let me, let...
Here you have an opportunity to do something, you have to go ahead and do it. Yes, go ahead.
My question is, and you can answer it, and Bill can answer it, or anybody can answer it. If we were to do this, what is the risk? What risk does the community face, if any?
Late tax bills.
Late tax bills?
You get late tax bills across the interest line. That's revenue that we don't have coming in that we have to pay out. So, we end up with a shortage there, and then what happens is, we voted every time at town meeting that the treasurer has, the town accountant has the ability to borrow money, and then borrowing money costs us money.
So, the risk, the only risk that we see is late tax. No, what risk, what other risks?
Another risk you have is that if you were to do it, let's say you increased it by 175,000. There is no guarantee that you would be able, let's say, made it 2,000,000, let's use a just a make-believe number. There is no guarantee that next year, FY '16, you're going to hit 2,000,400. For instance, we can make local receipts, they could, you know, by non-recurring. But the point is, if you did not hit the 2,000,400, you're not going to have local receipts of 2,000,400 when we do the recap next year. There's no way. Because you won't get it approved if we did that. That's a risk. You know, what you're doing is, you know, it's a, I'm not saying, "Don't do it," or whatever. I would recommend not to do it. My theory is, let's do it in an organized way. Let's, for the first time, do what Bill says. Let's go forward, and let's do what he's saying. And guarantee that year after year, we will do what he's saying. And I'll even make you that promise. But to me, to do it now, you know, when you can do it in a much, in a much organized way, you know, it's, and let's commit to it. That's all I'm saying. You can commit to it and do it.
Elizabeth?
Yeah, I'm just speaking for all the taxpayer, not most, speaking for everybody, all budget for tax bills. And I can guarantee that if they're late, yeah, and people, every people has their time, but the kind, what you're going to get, what you're going to be hearing will be overwhelming. Why are our tax bills? They can't do anything in town hall work. I mean, it's going to be not good. I mean, it's not going to last forever, but that
We would have to borrow money.
It's another hit that we would have to take.
So, we're, we're going to hang any move. So, we're worried that the sky is falling, and in fact, the risk is relatively low. The worst that's going to happen is that you'll be moved to death personally. If everything went bad on you, you're making a very calculated estimate of revenue that's very realistic. If the worst happens, that just means that you have less free cash next year, and that it really isn't that big a deal. The amount of borrowing is going to be So, I honestly think that if you really want to do something, this is the year to do it, because you can do it, get closer to your flat ladder tax rate, I don't propose that you make it flat, but you can get closer to your flat tax rate without penalizing the residential taxpayer. So, you have an opportunity that you may not ever have again, and I think the proposal makes a lot of sense.
And, but, if I may, I'll get to you. If I may, just your opinion on this, and I respect it with 30 years in assessing and whatever. Where was I going with my question? Is this the right time, in your opinion, to do it? Or is it, you know, the divergent opinion is that the better time to do it would be at budget, at budget time?
You're not going to have this opportunity again, probably, that you've got good growth. I have one question. Was there an adjustment to the residential values this year?
Yes.
A percent adjustment?
Yes.
What was it?
Across the board?
Yeah.
Well, it, it wasn't 1% across the board. Ranches went up about 3%, Colonials went up probably 2%. It wasn't just one number across the board. We don't Yeah.
Single families went up, average 3%, 3%-ish. Condos, condos took a big jump.
That's not counting the growth, that percentage of increase.
Everything else went flat.
Angie, you had one other point tonight?
Yes, I, I just would like to say that I agree with, is it Elizabeth? Okay, being here in the town of Maynard for the last six years, every time something like this happens, and the bills don't go out when they're supposed to, we look, it's blamed on us. I'm saying at this point in time, Bill, you've been a selectman, you've been on my board, you've been around a long time, there's no reason why that you can't make a promise to yourselves. Budgeting is right around the corner, okay? As it is, we did get good growth. Values have gone up. Our increase this year would be the lowest increase, even if you went with the 1.33 that we're recommending. It's the lowest increase that the residents and the commercial have seen in several years. Maynard is doing well. Real estate values are coming up. There's always opportunity. I don't agree that we'll never have this opportunity again. That is not true. We have a lot of projects coming down the pike, new projects, I mean, new growth, and that's a good thing for the town. I think that, but I know that I just got a budget letter that I have to start preparing for fiscal '16, so we're not talking that this is something that's going to be in the next five years. We're talking quite soon. This cycle that we're in, this is the third quarter bill that we're mailing out. First quarter bill will be out July. It happens fast. I just feel that at this point in time, I know that our DOR rep for the recap has looked at our recap and has had no problems with the recap this year. He did not question your local receipts. That is something that Maynard's always done. We've always estimated low. You do take a risk when you say, "I mean, maybe a lot of people bought new cars this year. Is that going to happen next year?" We don't know that. And that's how we estimate receipts. That's how our accountant does that. Can you increase it next year? Absolutely. Are there other ways to lower the tax rate besides just local receipts? Yes, there are. And I highly recommend that in the budget process, we look at those processes. Maybe we can do two of them and save more than $60 on the tax bill. I think that is something that we want to look at, but for right now, tonight, with our fiscal '15 budget and our fiscal '15 tax bills, I'd like to see the board vote on a split and take this up at your next budget meeting and, and really come up with some ideas.
Chris?
Well, the question I had was, you're going to, if you don't see the savings that you expect, and you don't realize the receipts you expect, and the financial aid is not what you expect, or it's cut, you know, then do we dip into the free cash to cover what essentially the world sees as a mistake? Is that, you know, is the $60 per person, the per house, is it worth it in the end? You know, there's no guarantee, but just because we have the money, doesn't mean we have to spend the money. That money is, I think the money in free cash is much better spent for other things and covering a mistake that we might have made tonight. And if, if the people in the room who we pay and hire to advise us suggest that this isn't the proper time, do we have to reconsider that maybe this isn't the proper time? And to your point, David, you asked Mr. Downing what he thought was now or later, and he didn't answer the question now or later. He just answered the question, "This was the right time, because it's the only time we can." So, you want to take another shot at his question, and do you think it's the proper time now, or do you think it's the proper time later? Because you didn't answer that question before. You answered the question saying that this is the only time we'll have this opportunity. And, you know, if everybody is in agreement that this has been happening year after year, this isn't going to be our last opportunity to do this.
I think it is the right time now. I didn't ask that question. I got cut off. Sorry.
Who cut him off?
Now, I do hope people realize that this is real money to real people, and, you know, we pretend it's 60 bucks on an average single family, but it's hundreds of dollars for every business in town. And it's a permanent $100 less, or hundreds of dollars less, because if we don't do this tonight, if we don't lower the tax bills tonight, what it means is, all that extra money we collect this year, we're going to be collecting it next year, a year after, a year after. Built into every tax bill forever.
Since I'm new, explain to me how it's, how it's year after year. It's only, it's an adjustment?
It's not necessarily adjustment. I mean, we have historically always budgeted to the maximum allowable tax revenues under Prop 2.5. We always assume that we're going to bump them up by 2.5 plus new growth. We always do that.
So, don't do that next year.
And the ability to not do that is immense. So, if you don't do it tonight, I can guarantee you, you're not going to be doing it.
I understand.
You're not going to be doing it in three months.
And I'm not arguing, but what I don't understand is, if you're telling me that we're going to make this change tonight, we're going to take $250,000 from the next series of tax bills that we're going to see for the next year, how is that going to, how is that going to also equate into 250,000 in savings in the next fiscal year?
Because the amount you can tax every year is based on the amount you taxed the prior year.
So, the baseline, the baseline goes down, and our new
No, it does not.
It does not?
Well, you could, John.
2.5% increase is over what the theoretical limit would be, and it doesn't want to go backwards. So, even if you don't raise it a particular year, it's not
I got you, okay.
I got to say, we never have missed an opportunity to raise it as much as we could.
I mean, you stand to lose in the next five years, premium revenue.
Are you okay, Bill?
You stand to lose, you know, that possibility.
Okay.
I mean, like, for instance, we talk about free cash. Did you know that this town of Maynard holds a record for the number of consecutive years for negative free cash? We talk about big numbers. For instance, in 2004, you had 197,000. The following year, 214. The next two years, you had 80,000 negative. Following year, you had 518. The following year, you had 0. 778, negative 725,000, and 585.
And what were they, the last four years?
2.9 million. But the question is, was that because of, we did well, or was that because we did lousy stuff on the books?
And what was it, what was after that?
Huh?
What was after that?
A million 693. And then we did a million 8 last year.
So, I'm pretty confident we can carve a quarter million out of that and still make a number.
I would recommend 170, because I know we can get that approved, if that's what you wanted to do.
I mean, I, you know, I'm not terribly excited by, you know, staff thinking, you know, helping people on their tax bills is a problem, it's going to be a hassle.
That's incorrect. Please don't say that.
But I, I do recognize, you know, if you're that worried, then, you know, perhaps the 175 that you are confident that you can get on the recap sheet is the number we should be talking about.
I'd like to clear the record. That is not how I feel.
I think it's 150.
I am here to help taxpayers. I do care about our taxpayers very much. I'm just saying that there's a right time and place to do things, and to spring this on us, which I never got privy to any letter on or anything about this subject coming up tonight, and I've never had to discuss this at any classification hearing that I've ever done for the town of Maynard, I just want it known that I do care about our taxpayers. I work very hard to make sure that everybody's value is accurate and correct, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't try to lower our tax bills.
And, thank you, thank you. We get it. And as I said earlier, this is not, Bill has mentioned this for at least two or three consecutive meetings as, as an idea. Well, because you're not here, Angie.
Well, I didn't know that you were going to have this discussion.
You know, so presumably, presumably you read our minutes, you see what's going on. Presumably, you hear about the meetings and whatever, but it has been discussed.
I'm sorry, Angie, I thought you were the author of the spreadsheet analysis that showed the 250,000 last
I understand that, but you also asked for a lot of other things as well. We haven't talked about any of those.
Steve?
I've been in a position before where we have recap sheets and the top of the bottom, all right? Bill said it there before, that every year, we budget to the maximum, okay? That's part of your process right now. You need to change that process. You've got to change it so that we take these kinds of things into account when we do the budget. You've got to be doing budgeting in January. It's not that far away. Change it down.
Well, actually, we've already done the revenue estimate. That, that happens in November. That's the first step.
Yeah, but if you go ahead and do this, let's assume, let's use 250 for an example, and you increase your local receipts. To do what you're saying, I mean, you know, you'd have to cut. In order to do, let's say, every year to do that, you know, let's say, let's not use, you know, all the new growth for the 2.5%. Let's make it 300,000. Beginning next year, you use a new local receipts number, you would have to cut expenses by 300,000 to do that. If you increase that number this year, right now, because you're going to keep that number the same.
This is a one-time adjustment.
But you're going to increase your local receipts, it's going to stay the same then, based upon what you're putting in now. So, that means whatever we put in next year, it'll be the same as what you have now. And what's going to happen is, in order to accomplish what you're saying, we'll have less tax revenue, you're going to have to cut expenses to do it.
Well, each year, we have more tax revenue, so we're not cutting expenses, perhaps
Well, to do it now, I'm saying you would
Perhaps we won't be buying many things as we want, but as it is now, you know, if we have, you know, if we have free cash in the millions of dollars, that tells me two things. One, we're doing a lot of good stuff, and the other is, we're overtaxing on the real estate bills, because we're overcollecting more than we budgeted for. And what we're using it for is a backdoor way to throw it into savings accounts and capital things. And personally, you know, that's an interesting thing, but we should roll that into the front end of the budget and be honest about it. But right now, we don't have that stuff in the budget. We don't need to do it. We can balance the budget with just a simple little math change. Change one number here and subtract it out there on the recap sheet. Done. And yeah, you got to sell it to the DOR, and all right, I got to believe that you can only sell 175. Maybe you can't sell 250. That would be too much trouble. So, we go and we sell 175 to them, and we do that cut. And then we've started the process, we've started the thought process, and we're ready to address it for next year's budget, too.
Tim's got a question or a comment.
I feel like we deviated from the original setting of the tax rate, but thank you for putting these papers together. I'm seeming to understand a little bit better. If you could just tell me, how did you arrive at 1.33?
Basically, if you look at the history, which I gave on page 16, we've roughly gone down 2 to 3% in that split. We were at 150, we went to 147, 144. In 12 and 13, we did stay the same at 139, but then you can see, we went down 2 in 37. So, going to 133 was just putting us in line, what we had been doing, the history of what we, of what the board was doing back to 2010. We're just following that, getting that tax rate a little bit closer, so that there's not such a larger amount being paid by your CIP.
You don't want to also shift it, let me apply a tax rate, because, you know, the elderly would have to move out of town, because there would be too much trouble to get their own stuff. All the residential tax rates
If I may, just quickly, on Bill's proposal, if I can hear the thoughts without taking a formal vote, just the ideas, before we, if we don't have to have any more discussion on that particular topic, then we can move on and talk about where we want to go with then we can move on and, and talk about where we wanna go with the split. What's the will of the board relative to that? Would you see yourself, um, do you wanna discuss it any further? Anybody? And if not, we can move on to just talking about the split. Yeah?
I mean, at this point, you know, I would agree, I think, was it Chris or apologizing, or who made the statement that... You know, what, what I'm hearing from pretty much everybody but Kevin at this point is that this is something we can certainly accomplish, including Mr. Pomford, was that this is something that can certainly be accomplished in the budgeting process. Personally, even before Mike brought it up, I had some concerns about how this would be affected by local aid changes. If that rolls out, we gotta let, I mean, as we saw, there's a letter today from Senator Eldridge pleading, pleading for less cuts to Chapter 70, uh, the circuit breaker, the special ed. circuit breaker, and, I don't know, there's two or three other items in there, which didn't even go into, uh, some things that are already woefully underfunded, like Chapter 70. You know, I, I'm gonna, I'll put it out to the, I, I'm, you know, when it comes to town money, I'm fairly risk averse. And I certainly appreciate, you know, that we can offer a cut right now. I'd like to do that, you know, thoughtfully, not, and I'm not suggesting, though, that we're, was not, there wasn't thought put into it, but it seems like it's a little bit at the, the last minute, as far as this, this, right now. Uh, I certainly can tell you, I would, you know, another statement was made, you know, people have said what we've heard about Maynard all these years, and, you know, there are some boards that, since I've been in town, where the, the joke was, they didn't, there wasn't a dollar, they couldn't find something to spend it on. You know, I, I'd rather see us start making some cuts, uh, and bring it down. And if we are woefully underestimating what our receipts are, then maybe we should make it a little bit more in, in line with what we're gonna see. But to sorta, to sorta plan our flag on, on a moving target is a little concerning to me.
Chris, any thoughts from you?
No, I, I, I think, you know, I, I agree with, with, um, what we just heard. It's just, it's a, it's a, it's a risk, and I don't know that we're in a position to risk, you know, risk $250,000 that we can, um, you know, we, it's a risk, it's a risk now. In the budget process, it's not a risk. It's a, it's a calculated decision. It's a, it's a risk today, it's not a risk in a month, a month and a half, I don't think.
Tim, thoughts?
It's definitely a risk, I agree with that. Personally, I would like to see where we stand this time next year before we make a decision like that or hold it off till a budget process.
All right, so, if I may...
Go ahead, Mike. Wow, I wish I, wish I wasn't sick. Puking over the railing on the front steps, but, um...
Glad I popped out back tonight.
And I, I mean this, I mean this in all, all good nature, but you newbies on the board are being duped. This is your chance, and...
Come on. It's a personal opinion.
You're gonna, you're gonna kick yourself...
I'm a big boy, I'm a big boy.
You're gonna kick yourself in three or four years when you go, wow, back in 2014, we could've done that, couldn't we?
I'm a big boy, and I don't consider Jason as a newbie, and, and he feels the same way as I do, from what I just heard, and...
I know, but, I mean, it, yeah, I mean, eventually you'll do it, but, you know, frankly, we all sit here and say we wanna lower tax bills for the residents. We have a chance to do that. To do this, this impact would be bigger than any economic development initiative we've done in years. But, yeah, it's just a shame. You, you have staff that says you could do at least 175, and they could sell that. And, you know, it's a good one, but, uh...
Ask a question?
It's just, sorry to see it.
Go ahead, Mike.
The one thing, now, we keep saying free cash and everything, but if we say there's a, the state aid is cut, that means we start off next year already, let's assume it's 150,000, and we can do what, you know, fund it with free cash and everything. But right off the bat, you'd have 100 and say, let's use 250, you'd have 250,000 less than taxes. You'd have it offset because you're gonna keep the local receipts, but you automatically, you're gonna be coming into the year with local aid being less than what you got this year. So you gotta start, that's another risk you're taking, is that you're also gonna have 100, you could have 150,000 less revenue next year, on top of what you're saying. So even if you're saying what you're saying is right, and it evens out because we've increased local receipts, you're still gonna have that risk, that your starting point for local aid could be considerably lower.
Kevin had one point. I really wanna move the, the meeting on, but Dick, you can, you can have one last comment.
Real quick, I just wanna get over the misconception of we're underestimated, uh, local receipts. I, I actually advocate that we've cautiously estimated local receipts, and yeah, there could be some slight increases. Particularly, there seems to be this aura, whether it be with the FinCom or with the Board of Selectmen around free cash. Department of Revenue recommendations is a three, three to five percent of your budget, as you should be your free cash target. That puts us at 1.1 to 1.8 million. Those specific free cash numbers that you're referencing, you can pinpoint exactly why we see in those. The particular year where we had over 2 million, we auctioned off four homes and had a number of other one-time things. Last year, we auctioned off a home, one-time things. We had some major departmental turnbacks that were one-time things that we didn't fund, for instance, the, uh, civilian dispatch. That was $160,000 that came back to the town. So we, we won't see free cash numbers at that level. I do, you know, I hope we see free cash numbers in the three. A lot of communities strive for 4.5 percent, but certainly, those aren't outliers. And, and there seems to be a misconception among town leadership, whether it's Finance Committee or the Board of Selectmen, that, that, because of that, and it could be that the history of Maynard, going back to 1981, is negative free cash numbers or extremely low free cash. And the, the last three or four years, we've done, well, we had 725,000, but certainly, the last three years, uh, we've done it. So I just wanna make it clear that, um, you know, the, as far as local receipts, yeah, there can be some slight increases, but I, you know, I would cautiously increase those anyway, uh, as far as revenue. And, um, you know, be, because it, it's a calculated, it's not underestimated, it's purposely done.
Okay. Dick?
So I, I was just gonna say that, uh, this actually is the time to make the decision as opposed to budgeting time. Because at budgeting time, you should be conservative. What you're budgeting is trying to figure out what you're gonna be presenting to town meeting. You should be conservative of that low ball underestimate local receipts. Now that you're, uh, well into the year, and now you have a better, clearer idea of what the reality is, these are the times to actually take those opportunities and run with it. You can't do that last, last December and last January and last February, because you didn't know what was gonna play out. So having a low local receipts number was very conservative, been a very prudent thing to do. Here we are now in November, almost into December. Here is your opportunity with all this new information that you have between that six months. This is the time that you really wanna make those kinds of decisions, because you have more information.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to talking about where we wanna go with the, uh, with the split. And, you know, my, my feeling on these things is always, has always been, you know, people don't care necessarily about percentages of splits or whatever, they, what they care about is what's, what's it mean to my pocket? And, um, I still don't know if I fully understand the impact, um, of the various splits that are proposed to, to, you know, I don't know, if I could sit there and say to anyone, the average tax bill will go up by X. I, I see that in front of me, I'm just confused by it. But anyway, um, I open up the floor to the board relative to the discussion on the, on the split and where we wanna go with the number. One last thing I wanna say is, um, you know, eight years ago, seven years ago, when I was first elected to the Board of Selectmen, one of the things that I said, uh, at the time was that it was my long-term goal, and it remains such. My long-term goal was to reduce the, uh, split tax rate from commercial to, uh, between commercial and residential. And, um, I've been happy to be able to work along with the boards in the years to do that, with, you know, one exception where we had to remain the same. You know, I'm hopeful that we can continue along that trend. I don't, I don't know if, if we can do it all, you know, any, any large jumps or whatever, because I say, and I say the same thing every year, people are tapped out. They are, you know, we need, our residents, you know, I ran for reelection this past May. Jason did, Jason ran for election as well, and the two gentlemen at the end ran for election just a month ago. Uh, I think all of us in the last year have heard the same story, that taxes, the taxes are too high. So, um, I wanna, I wanna do what we can to, um, to try to help the residents out as best we possibly can. So, anyway, I'll open it up to discussion from the board as to where you think we should go. You wanna start?
Sure. You know, clearly, the pattern has been to try and, and, and bring it together. We no longer have the, we no longer have digital, you know, we don't have one large rate payer that's sort of floating us. You know, to, to your point, David, and from, from what I've seen, like I said, it, it's been slowly creeping down. I think we has, we have had some good growth this year, uh, you know, which would seem to make it, you know, fairly palatable to, to make an adjustment. I'll, I'll bring up, uh, someone mentioned to me that, uh, you know, everybody, everybody, you know, can agree, we all wanna support the downtown. I think this, this is a way to do that, uh, by helping sort of take some of the levy off of the, uh, some of, some of the burden off of the, the commercial properties. The only, the only question I would have is, and I, and I pose this to, uh, a couple of business owners in town, which is, you know, or, you know, i- if we were to go this route and try and, try and tighten that up and provide some, some savings for the, you know, for the commercial and, and industrial owners, you know, does that make it down to, to the businesses? Or is that gonna be, you know, right into the pocket of, of a landlord, or tied up in a lease, or something like that? So, uh, I, I would agree with the sentiment of reducing it. I have that one question about the practicality of the matter. But, yeah, I, I have no major concerns about, you know, what's being recommended.
You're talking about, you know, in any case, um, between 226 and 260, if you go as low as 133, 265 dollars worth of increase in taxes, and I think there's a big concern for, you, you have, you're an advocate for the elderly, um, David, and I, and that's, you know, I, I get that, and I'm not sure where you stand on these numbers, but as, as an advocate for the elderly, which we all should be, you have to be concerned about those numbers going up every year, and, and the possibility that those, those type of increases are gonna eventually start to force people that have been here a very long time out of town, you know? And, um, if those people are 268 dollars less, and there's, uh, there's a certain number of those people who have 265 and 226 dollars less to spend money, most of those people aren't going too far to spend that money. So you're, 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 you know, you're hurting the businesses at the same time you think you're gonna help them. Because if, if I don't have my 226 dollars to spend, I'm not gonna be spending it somewhere, and it's not gonna matter, and I'm saving somebody else 11 or 12 or 13 hundred dollars in their business. So it's kind of a double-edged sword, but I, I think we have to consider it seriously, you know, we're not gonna drive too many businesses out of town, but you're certainly gonna drive some of the, uh, people that have been here a very long time and can afford these constant increases out of town if we keep, we don't, if we continue to close the gap and do it drastically at, at one time.
Yeah, and I, I, I hear that, and I, that's why, um, prior to your joining the board, um, we had a brief discussion. It never really moved beyond discussion here and some discussion, I guess, at the high level, at the administration level, on providing, um, some assistance to the elderly on their tax rates through a, a shift that Sudbury has adopted, where there is a, you know, there's a burden assumed by other residents in town, but certain elderly, uh, people who qualify get, uh, some tax relief. And I proposed that, and it was discussed, and the administration took it, and I don't know if there was anything more than one meeting on it, but, um, you know, I still support that as an, as an op, opportunity for us to help our, our seniors. And I don't want that forgotten. So, um, it's not lip service that I give, and I am very, very concerned about, um, seniors' tax, tax bills. People that live in Maynard are, you know, we, we're, our community is diverse. We have, we have a lot of blue collar workers, we have some white collar workers, and people that are not necessarily, we're not a wealthy community, and everybody's stretching it. So, um, I feel that pain. And, and as I said, when I was out running for reelection, uh, the, the one comment I heard consistently was, my taxes are too high, what do I get for it? So I hear it, I hear that. And I'm trying to, tonight, you know, do what we can to, um, you know, to sort of be easy on, uh, as easy as possible on the residents with, with what we've got. Tim, any thoughts?
Uh, it's just interesting to me that, uh, you guys think the elderly will continue, they'll move out, but after seeing the numbers from, from the Town Planner and the Council of Aging, we keep projecting Maynard population be older. So if what we haven't done in the past and what, what's happened now in the last five years, and the population's still getting older, I guess it's hard for me to get a grasp on everybody's gonna just move on out.
I think those are just demographic, um, you know, estimates on the future of our community, cuz our people are, by average, getting older, but it's not, the average age is not, um, you know, I'm 52, I don't consider myself elderly. You know, the, the, uh... But the average age is gradually increasing, so, you know, when we talk about an increasing, and, you know, we're, we're estimating 15, 20 years out, that if things remain the same, the demographics will be that Maynard is aging. So...
I don't, I don't think it's just an elderly problem either, I don't think it's...
No, I agree with you.
It's certainly not an elderly problem, it's just, it's just that that seems to be a, um, a, a place where it, where it hits home the hardest, but it's certainly families in every, uh, every age group and, and every, you know, every demographic that's suffer, suffering with the same problem, and Maynard in a lot of other places as well.
Sarah?
Yes, I was reading a bunch of statistics, and according to the DOR, in the last fiscal year, there were four foreclosures in Maynard. And that's a 33% decrease, decrease from the year before. So just to have some data, four people lost their house, it's, um, and that the rate of foreclosures is decreasing in general.
So, we're not gonna get anywhere until somebody makes a motion. Dick, one more comment?
Yeah, I'd just like to speak on behalf of, I guess, the businesses. I would encourage the board to, uh, to give a discount, take an opportunity this year to, uh, where the residents won't get hurt because of the money that's available, and, uh, lower the percentage as much as possible. Monster is gonna be leaving the mill, that's gonna leave a lot of open space. You know from history that when they had the tip, that they were able to fill the mill. Some tax rates really have an impact on how much that mill fills up with, with businesses. And by lowering the taxes, I, I think that's gonna be a, a good thing for us. I'd like us to send a message out to businesses that, uh, we're invited here to Maynard, and that we'll, we'll treat you fairly and treat you well. We, uh, with the current situation that we're at, uh, every eight dollars that the commercial pays, there is only a one-dollar discount to the residential. So the 50 dollars that we were talking about here represents 400 dollars to business for that discount. So, um, the shift does make a real difference to how business operates in town. And I think, you know, just by looking at the vacancy rate in the mill at the moment, since they've come down a portion of their, of their tip, is an indication. We have other difficulties, and I grant you that we've come off a bad economy, where almost everybody has suffered in the business community. But here's an opportunity where things are starting to turn around, people are getting their jobs, and unemployment is down. I think this is the time to try to encourage business to come into town. And I think if we penalize the business, we look on page 13, you see the trend there. It's not good. Business is getting to be a smaller and smaller and smaller part of the, of the town. And if we don't stop that and it goes away, it's gonna be even more detrimental to the residential taxpayers. So at some point, we're gonna level this thing off, we gotta stop this slide. And I think that, to address Jason's question, I know for a fact that the mill is all triple net. And so any reduction that you do in the taxes will go to the actual occupants and not to the landlords. And I think that's pretty much true of the downtown area. I know there's a few that aren't, but the majority of them are all triple net leases. And so it will go directly to the owners and to the occupants of the businesses themselves.
Thank you. The, um, just, Vic?
Yes, I've stood here, year after year, and recommended that the town... Yes, I've stood here, year after year, and recommended that the town have a single tax rate for all real estate. Mr. Donnie just made a big speech about the businesses. The businesses are hurting. The economy is not as good as most people realize. As far as the mill goes, we gave them a 15-year tip, and quite frankly, I think they screwed it up with mismanagement. That's my opinion there, okay? But, from a small businessman's point of view, and I run a business now, I'm in my 54th year, and I find that not only the split tax rate has an effect, as far as what my bottom line is, but everything, everything that I touch, I go to replace a vehicle, the vehicle's more. I pay my light bill, it's more, my heating bill is more. So, it isn't just the tax bill that's affecting the businesses. Plus the fact that if you people get out of this building and listen to comments, we seem to have, people seem to have a negative impression of the town of Maynard for a number of reasons, okay? And they say right out that they don't want to move in here and they don't want to open a business here. I had a building down on Powder Mill Road, the old H.H. Scott property, the one that is right on Powder Mill Road, stood empty for how many years? 10 years, a muller? Nobody in the town made any effort that I could see, of a concerted effort, to have somebody move into that building. Now it's being occupied. What's it being occupied with? Probably not something that you or I would really want, but at least it's going to be occupied, it's going to be producing taxes, okay? But, I mean, you keep talking about it, but, you know, the small businessman may own a cash register, but it doesn't necessarily mean the cash register's full all the time. So, I've been advocating for a lot of years, a single tax rate, and I don't honestly believe a single tax rate, once it gets established, is going to have any effect on the residences. My business does not require school houses, that were one of the biggest expenses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah, sure.
A lot of great opinions tonight, a lot of great different views, especially from some of the new folks on the board. I just want to say, Tim, to your question earlier, Stephen, that sort of answer with Angie on how we came up with the 133 rate. So, Angie's not coming up with that rate. So, the board is actually voting in the meeting, right, the Board of Assessors, on her recommendation, whether we agree with it or not. And that board's made up of three taxpayers in this town, right? We're town members, we live here. So, it's not that it's a professional town employee that's making that recommendation. Chris, to your point, we're taking into account elderly, ourselves, all the things that, when our kids are in schools as well, too. So, we're trying to take a well-rounded approach from the residents, the residents, as well as the businesses here. And the 133 is, I think a lot of people want to get closer to the single taxpayer rate that Vic was just commenting on. We don't know if it's the right time, or if everybody has the right appetite for it, but you should be informed that we did a lot of soul searching and discussion about, and Jason was at his last meeting, he did attest to it, that, you know, we put a lot of thought into what we wanted to do with this tax rate, and it's important, it's not just about, you know, increasing the tax rate of residents, because I don't want to pay more taxes if I can help it, but we're going to pay more taxes regardless. So, we're trying to do a minimal, you know, increase on the residents and also help out the small businesses as well, which, from all indications in the town last year about the problems we've had here, we want to protect the downtown, we want to protect the small businesses. And this is one of the big impetus for us actually going with the 133 recommendation. So, I just wanted to get that clear, just from a board member's perspective, who actually voted on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have a motion to make? Chris, you were talking...
Does the motion have to be to a specific number?
Yes.
Yes.
There's a language here, if you want to read it, but the, sorry, it's wet.
Send the agenda report.
Is that your water or Bill's?
That's mine.
It's water, I'm not touching it.
Were you leaning, just so I understand, Chris, were you leaning towards something closer to the current shift, higher up on the chart than the 133 that's recommended?
I'm leaning towards the middle number, but I'm also of the opinion that he who has his, what is it, the client, own lawyer, his own client is a fool. My point earlier was that we do have a lot of people that make these recommendations to us and tell us these things. Whether I'm being duped or not is going to matter, public opinion, and you guys can all decide that at a later date. But, we put a lot of people in places and we read their resumes and hire them based on their skill sets. To ignore their skill sets, to me, is foolish. So, I might not make a motion, but I lean towards a number closer to what they have in mind as opposed to the number we're at today.
Okay. Maybe my comments earlier were misleading or whatever, because it's sort of where, you know, I certainly wasn't suggesting earlier that we should go any lower than the 1.33 that was recommended. If anything, I would not have a huge concern if we lowered it to the 1.35 to show additional movement, which would then not hit the, you know, it's a two cent difference on per thousand. But it would show some, you know, compassion to both sides, given that you'd get the 72 cent, you know, break on the commercial side. So, I'm open for a motion from anybody.
I was going to say, you need to wait for Jason, but, Jason, do you have any thoughts on this?
I apologize.
On a number?
You were looking at...
Well, it sounds like...
Just to see that we were looking for the chair. He was planning to try and hang in there until this, for this vote, and then he was going to excuse himself. So, that's why, I apologize, I stepped out to see if I could track him down. My opinion would be, you know, the 133, still, actually, real quick question. Angie, the average increase, I know it's a little consolation when you're still raising it, but the average increase annually has been, remind me what page that's on?
Actually, single family, I was looking at your single family tax bill. I don't have the actual...
It's the last page, it's not a...
Tim and I have a question, Angie.
Yeah.
Were you looking for that information? What causes the jumps from 1 to 120 to 125 to 130 to 133 to 135 to 137? Why, like, you know, what is there?
You have a choice, your choice is on this big spreadsheet.
Oh, here we go. 126.
Okay, so...
Those are just the numbers that the board came forward with. To, just to, you know, you can look at all of these. You can go 1.5, 1.49, 4.8.
Okay, okay.
We didn't want to give you 50, Chris, if I tried to look to it, I mean...
Okay.
We picked out the ones that we, that the board picked out the ones that they felt would be beneficial for you to contemplate in this decision.
All right.
Jason, if you looked...
26, Angie, this one?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay. So, our annual changes have been in the last four years, 6.7, 4.2, 6.0, 5.2.
So, like, you can see from 13 to 14, the average single family tax bill went up roughly $300 and almost, almost $400. It went from 609.6 to 614, 6,414, if I can catch it. Oh, there it is, I'm sorry. Look at page 24.
Yeah, it's about $300 a year, it looks like.
Yeah, if you look at page 24, I have that, Jason. And go back to 2004. So, you can see that last year it was 318, 345, 233, 347, 276, 174, 204, 206, 412. I don't know why that ended on 89.
Well, you're going the other way. 2005, I know that was, that was a boom year in real estate. So, I'm sure values were, I think, at that point, they were... The assessors were so busy that, you know, it was, a lot of places, like, my recollection, were going over to using sale prices for assessed value as opposed to something less. So, I'm not an expert in it, but...
But, I mean, maybe that's something, Jason, that I could add to the sheet, is take the average increase in the tax bill for five years. I think I, would you like me to add that next year so you can see what that, and maybe do it for the, because on the second page is the CIP.
Yeah, I think you have it in the packet. You have it in the packet, and I'm just cautious, I just want to be cautious as far as looking at what the increase, what the change in the rate is on the bill versus the actual rate because of the obvious change in valuation. I guess to be short about it, I don't have a lot of heartburn about the 133. I'm not sure, I apologize, because I did have to step out there.
No, no, that's okay.
If you guys had thrown out a number, or...
Nobody had, I was trying to sort of nail it down to where we had a number where, you know, my sense was, as I think you probably heard this comment, that I'm okay with the 133, but I'm looking, you know, the other numbers between 137 and 133, I wouldn't have a problem with. My concern is that we go in the right direction. That's my concern. So, I would, if somebody were to make a motion at 136, 135, 134, 133, I'm not going to oppose it.
Okay, I mean, I have the verbiage there. I'd be happy to make a motion. Where am I? I make a motion to approve the, yeah, I was reading all the language I don't need to say. Motion to approve the tax rate with a CIP shift of 1.33.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, for the discussion. Are you comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that. It's...
Tim?
It's less of an increase than last year for the average person.
For those who's been in attendance.
Yeah.
I think it goes in the right direction for everybody.
And every shift has a reduction to commercial.
So, Tim, anything?
I'm going to agree with the professional opinion on this, with relying on the staff.
All right.
Don't forget the three citizens.
The citizens.
All those in favor of the motion? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I do have the excess levy from the recap that needs the majority of the board to sign. Basically, it's the money that, it's the LA5 that we submit with the DOR. If I could just maybe start with Jason and pass it down. It's not really a vote.
Do we need to be in session, can we take a five minute...
Oh, before we even go, I have to, I have to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
So, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Jason, seconds. I don't know if it has to be roll called, but all those in favor? Okay, so we've closed the public session. You needed a break?
Oh, I was going to say, if anybody wanted a break, we could take a five... Take a two minute recess to sign this, give everybody a chance to regroup after spirited discussion. There was a request, my fellow members of the board, there was a request. We are on item, this would put us at item 10. There was a request, we do have someone here from CTI who's involved with the cell tower lease agreement on item number 13. If there's no disagreement, I'd like to move that forward to, just take that out of order, and then we will pick up where we left off. Does anybody have any issue with that?
Sounds good.
Okay. So, this is for the cell tower lease agreement. Kevin, do you want to...
Yeah, so, thank you, Mr. Chair, for taking this out of order. Carrie Larson, who's the general counsel, corporate counsel for CTI Towers, is present, so...
Sorry to keep you waiting.
She sat through since 7:30, so...
Democracy in action.
Appreciate you taking this out. For those that recall, at our most recent special town meeting, we had an article to, and to approve, authorize the board of selectmen to enter into a lease agreement for up to 25 years at the Summer Hill Tower. The tower, that article passed, the town, with town council. Myself and Andrew have been negotiating a new contract with CTI Towers, who has been since May on a month-to-month continuation of a expired agreement, and has been working on a month-to-month agreement. So, we're now at a point where the agreement has been finalized. Couple of highlights from the current agreement is it's a 20-year agreement with the town's option to renew for an additional five years, so it's up to 25 years. But the actual agreement is 20 years with the town's, again, with the town's option to renew for another five. Couple of the highlights that I've mentioned previously, but are now actually in the contract, is in addition to the ground lease, there's a 3% escalator annually that's added to that ground lease payment that CTI makes, as well as with the 20% revenue share of tenants that they get onto the tower. The other item of note that we've added in there is a one-time payment equal to the annual revenue share for any new lease, you know, entity that they get on, either, it's written as it's a kind of a one-time payment or reimbursement for a particular thing that we might undergo. Obviously, we don't know, you know, what our needs are, per se, at the time. It could be, could be very well that we negotiate with a tenant for a particular project that is kind of earmarked for something. We could actually have them handle the payment of that, depending on what it is. We've talked about a number of possibilities, potentially with closed-circuit TV systems up there, having them do the work, type of thing. So, that is in there, but what we've done is we've set a floor, so there's a $1,000 floor. The reason for that, you know, is that CTI did graciously admit that there could be some small entities that could be added on there that really, their one-time revenue would be so nominal, it could be, you know, a $480 piece. So, we did set a $1,000 floor, but certainly some of the bigger tenants that may go on there, similarly with AT&amp;T, whether it be another mobile carrier of Arise and Sprint, some of those, we could potentially negotiate a one-time payment equal to their, to their revenue share, for the annual revenue payment, rather. Those are really the big highlights, just kind of cleaned up. The original agreement, if you recall, was entered into in 1986? Yeah, 1986, and expired in 2000. And then there was an amendment continuation, which was in effect up until, you know, this past, this past year. So, we've cleaned up the contract language with, obviously, new town council, gotten in line with the town's current standard contract language. Had some go back and forth with Ms. Larson and her team, with some changes that they had concerns with. We met with her, as well as with town council, to kind of finalize it. And we're at a point now where we want to present it to the board for approval, and, you know, any questions with ultimately approval.
Quick question, Kevin. You mentioned briefly the closed circuit. Is that, was that your comment regarding, we had had some discussion about them possibly putting up some security cameras that overlooked the water towers and stuff? Is that what you were referencing? And is that, that's not part of this agreement, or it is part of this agreement?
Well, it's not, because I don't know really what our need is. I don't know that that necessarily is a need. Chris has obtained some of that equipment already. What it does allow for... What it does allow for is, at the time that CTI says we're going to be adding on X tenant, at that time, we can negotiate either a payment to the town, whether we take it in, and that's a little bit trickier, because typically, we take a payment from them, it goes as unanticipated revenue into the general fund, and we don't really have the ability to expend that. It's good for revenue, but it doesn't, it doesn't accomplish our need to move a particular project forward. What I was referring to is if we identified that, hey, of equal value, call it $8,000, of equal value, would you guys be willing to pay for, you know, like I said, a closed-circuit TV project instead of the town having to do it? It could be kind of the same in kind, as opposed to giving us a check. So, it's in there that allows for us at the time that they add, you know, keeping in mind this contract.
But when you reference closed-circuit TV, you're talking about security.
I was specifically talking about adding it to the tower for the water tanks.
Okay, all right.
But that's just one example.
Yeah, it was just an example of one possible thing.
Other entities, you know, have said, you know, we were looking to, you know, add a kind of a $5,000 structure to a park in town. You know, hey, Sprint, this is what we negotiated, we're looking to get this done. So, this is easier than, you know, to accomplish a real need in town.
Yeah, okay, so it might, it might be something else that...
It might be something else, exactly.
You may want to, you know, all right.
So, that was, we didn't specifically put in there anything.
We need a new shovel or something?
Right.
Can you buy us a new shovel?
It's just a minimum floor.
Gotcha.
It's a minimum floor of $1,000 with a match of their annual 20%.
Gotcha, okay.
Payment.
That's fine.
So, yeah, that's kind of where it's at.
All right.
That's pretty much the highlights. Pretty standard, as I've said in the past, you know, we've been working with CTI for a number of months now, particularly town reviewed the process, it wasn't advantageous to go out to, you know, a formal RFP, in that we own the land, but the tower belongs to them. We're maintaining our town infrastructure that's on the tower. You know, CTI will be maintaining the tower as far as maintenance and things like that, so, you know, it's a clean and positive contract for the town.
I will make a motion then to approve the contract between the Town of Maynard and CTI Towers Assets 1 LLC as submitted in our packet.
Yeah, Andrew has the cleanup version of that, which also provides the additional exhibits that weren't in the packet.
So then, as not submitted in the packet.
Well, the language in the contract is identical. What's different in this is the, there's two exhibits at the end.
Appearance and attachments.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
And then all the legal stuff with the name of the company spelled out and so on.
My will, my motion remains.
David made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Chris, second. Any discussion? I have one, just one clarification, just so everybody's clear. This is a 20-year contract with a five-year option, town's option?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
On the ground lease, there's a 3% escalate, so we get 3%.
Annually, that increases by 3%.
Okay. Can you just clarify the 20% revenue share? Is that on current tenants or all tenants?
It's, currently, there's only one tenant, that's AT&amp;T, but it'll be on all tenants that they add.
Okay, and then the one-time, okay, I'm good with that.
And the one-time applies to, that's why, again, there could be some, I don't know particularly, I don't recall who they said, but there might be something that might only generate $500, that's why the floor was put in.
Yeah, no, I'm okay with that. I just wanted to make sure that I got the other stuff correct.
Yep.
Okay.
There's three originals to decide.
All right, hearing no, the motion has not. Having heard no discussion, all in favor of accepting the contract? Unanimous, 4-0.
Thank you. So, just to be clear, that's, CTI is unable to actually target potential, you know, tenants for that. I mean, they have some, you know, ideally lined up, but it prohibits them to really enter into agreement, because their tenants want to see that they've secured a long-term contract, and that's why the 20-year, 25-year option is of value, because they can then, in essence, go ahead and attract those potential new tenants, which has an advantage to the town.
Understood. Very good.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you, have a good night. Okay. While you guys are signing those, let me just go ahead and move on to, move back to item number 10, 129 Parker Ad Hoc Committee Zoning Recommendations. This was a, this is an item that was requested by David to address some of the requests from the ad hoc committee for some potential zoning changes, and David, I'll let you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of the request, I sent everybody an email, I think you all got it, I have copies, if anybody in the audience wants a copy. Basically, I believe that it's time for somebody in the town to step up and move the ball a little bit forward. Back, close now to a year ago, when the ad hoc committee came forward with some suggestions as to some zoning changes that could be made over at 129 Parker Street under the NBOD that were supported not only by the ad hoc committee, but also supported by the visioning sessions that had been held prior to the ad hoc committee. Those were, those were put forward by the ad hoc committee, and nobody did anything with it. And so, here we sit, almost a year later, and as we know, the, the current developer has told us that basically, they're not interested. I think that they showed some interest in potentially doing an assisted care facility at one point, but only if they would dump it into a much larger project than the town had already indicated that we were not going to take. So, really, what I would like to do is tonight, formally have the board ask the, the planning board to review the proposals that were submitted to the town by the ad hoc committee for additional uses for that property, and to come back to us by the end of December to let us know as to their opinion, as to whether or not any of these are viable in their opinion, and if we can move forward in analyzing the, the value of moving forward with some of these options. And I think the key point here is, you know, I was very frustrated in hearing especially our staff tell us at our last meeting that our town is unfriendly to business. It's the furthest from the truth. You heard our chief assessor tonight talk about all of these wonderful things that we have in our community relative to business, and how, oh, this is increasing, this is increasing. That wouldn't be true if, if we weren't business-friendly. I think we might have some policies relative to how people, you know, some, some personality issues, and some issues pertaining to people coming into town hall looking for some help that might need to improve, but as far as our town and our residents, it's offensive to hear people say that we are not friendly to business. Look down the street at 62, we have the new building that Vic was talking about, that's open, that's going to open up with a new business there. We have the auto parts shop that, that Jason visited for the, for the ribbon cutting. These are new businesses that come to Maynard and are, are here because they want to be here, and I haven't heard them complaining that Maynard is unfriendly to them, and to hear, again, to hear staff suggest that we are is just unfair and really inappropriate in my eyes, because...
If I could interject, that's not what was said. What we said was we're hearing from entities that we're business-unfriendly. The staff isn't claiming that the town is business-unfriendly, but that's what we're hearing. You referenced Route 62, that building's been vacant for eight years, and despite what Mr. Tomlin said, there's been significant efforts to try to build it.
I agree.
Through development.
I agree.
So, as we are as a conduit and relaying the information that what we're hearing from folks, because, guess what, the next day, developers came and met with us for certain projects, all of whom claim that the town is business-unfriendly.
Yeah, well, I...
The town's going to get what they're asking for.
The town being the residents, or the town being the, the process that the town puts them through is a big difference. And, you know, speak to the, another, another new business that we have in town is the, is the theater. Let's speak to the theater owner and ask him about his experience with the Town of Maynard versus some experiences that he's had with others, and we'll see that the Town of Maynard, not the board of selectmen, not the residents of Maynard, because actually, he loves the Town, the Town of Maynard residents, it's other issues that have been, that have been the blockade, that we here as, as the, you know, we have the stewards of the town should be, should be making sure are repaired. When people, you know, have problems when they come into town hall being told, you know, read the book, that's not good, and so...
It's not quite that black and white. I mean, that particular property has its own issues. I mean, for a year and a half, it's not, it's not because of the town, it's because...
Why is it every time that somebody claims something, though, Kevin, it's, it comes back to, it's that guy's fault, it's that guy's fault, it's that guy's fault, it's never, let's look upon ourselves as a community, let's look upon ourselves as...
You're hearing one side of it, and it's not accurate.
But when, when there's smoke, it's fire, Kevin.
The fire chief that says, I would never allow my kids to see a movie in that facility, because I've asked continuously for 12 months for them to do fire upgrades, that they illegally put in a theater that, with no building permit many years ago. There's significant reasons why that building had opened, very minimal of it had to do with town staff. There's major issues that that building particularly had, that they, as a building owner and as a business owner, needed to come by. Am I...
I think we can, I think we can learn a lot from speaking to the owner of the theater and having him come perhaps, perhaps inviting him in and asking him about his experience with certain members of our staff.
What does this have to do with the article?
Yeah, let's...
Because it really has to do with the fact that there was a complaint or an issue made that Maynard is unfriendly to business, and in fact, the Maynard residents are looking for us to lead them towards bringing business in, and we've done nothing to help them. So, here's my effort to try to do that, showing some leadership, as I hope this new board, newly constituted, will indeed do. That's the purpose, and to repair some of the issues that we hear from some of the other businesses that come into town that say, I've got a problem with X, Y, and Z when I come into town hall. How many times have I sat here and talked about customer service being the most important thing that we do? And we're making progress, but we've got to do better, we've got to do more. That's what sends people away from Maynard, not the welcoming people here on the committee or the welcoming people of the community itself. It's the, the issues that we fail to address properly, and that have been going on for quite some time. So, tonight, what I'm like, what I'm looking to do is to have the, the planning board address some of the issues that were proposed by the ad hoc committee, come back to us by the end of December with some suggestions as to whether or not these are viable issues, and whether or not we can put it on to a spring town meeting warrant, to change some of the zoning over there to allow for some new uses, and then show this to the developer that's currently there. Maybe if they can't do it, maybe they can partner with another developer that can come in and do some of these things that Maynard say, that, that Maynard residents have overwhelmingly said during the ad hoc committee, as well as in the visioning sessions, that we are willing to, to bring into our community, and we'll welcome them, and we'll vote for it, rather than retail, 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 250 houses, which is all that sits on the board right now, and we're not going to get anywhere with that. So, that is the reason for the, for the memo, that is the reason why I'm asking the board to, to agree, to ask the planning board, let's, let's ask the planning board to come back to us, we're showing the leadership and moving this, this ball along, because nobody has done it in two and a half years.
All right, so, let's, I mean, we can, I guess we can open up the comment. Tim, or Chris?
I, I think it's a, it's a, it's obviously a good idea to get them to take a look at this and come back to us with some recommendations, but I will say that, you know, whether, whether it's welcoming people, or whether it's the, what goes on in this building, or with our people or our processes, and I tend to think it's more processes than our people, if the, if the end result is a perception of some that we're business-not-friendly, then that's the perception, and perception becomes reality. I don't think there's anybody that purposely sabotages business or treats people poorly, but I think that if our processes and our, you know, our cumbersome paperwork and the type of things that we have some people do, and some of the hoops we ask people to go through to do simple things, make us seem unfriendly, then the perception becomes reality, because frankly, that's something that I've heard quite often, and I know people that have gone elsewhere to establish businesses, and it's, and it's a shame, but that, I think that that's, we have to pay attention to that as well. But I, I agree with David's assertion that we need to get this ball rolling and get things moving, and we should absolutely get the planning board to get involved and, you know, pull out some of the recommendations from this, this ad hoc committee report and get it to us. I wouldn't wait till the end of December, I'd wait two or three weeks till after their next meeting or two.
I, the only reason I chose the end of December was to be kind to them, because, you know, they meet only twice a week, twice a month, and they're not going to get this until early December, so I would give them two meetings to review it, which is why I gave them to the end of December, so, yeah, it's...
Now, do we have to do that, do we have to vote on that, or do we have to put it in writing? How would you do that?
Well, I think it's just a formal request from the board through the administration to, to the planner, to instruct the planning board that the board of selectmen has asked that they do this.
Yeah, we'll just prepare a memo from myself, reflective to that.
Tim, do you have anything?
Well, looking at this, I wouldn't even thought of half of this, these items to put in that property. As you said, retail and housing, that's what everyone's concerned about. If we can get the message out that there's other options, and it's a benefit to have these other options, and the planning board, they've got the supermarket and everything else in mind, if they have a plan, and this is probably on the back burner, but if we can get this out to the public and say, hey, there's other options, look at the benefit, I don't see why we can't have them come in and explain.
This doesn't, this list is in addition to what's currently allowed at the NBOD, which a supermarket is, so a supermarket, you know, is, it's understood that that's included on this list, and this is not all-inclusive of those, and I want to emphasize, this is not my list, it's not David Gavin's list, this is a list that came from visioning sessions and the, the ad hoc committee. That people, when you, you know, I attended those meetings, and people were supportive of this, and this is how you move things forward, not by ignoring it and just saying housing and retail.
I know, there's plenty of people that don't know these are viable options.
Yeah. Well, to be fair, to be fair or unfair, the developer has told us, we're not interested, we don't do that. Well, that's why I suggest that maybe the developer is the wrong developer for Maynard. We can go to the property owner at some point and say, the developer that you've chosen is the wrong developer for us, look at the things that we are ready and willing to work with you on, get us somebody who's willing to do that with us. Or they can hire somebody to consult with them, because I know specifically on the hotel issue, which, you know, whether we like the idea of a hotel or don't like the idea of a hotel, the developer's representative at one of the, one of the meetings of the ad hoc committee, his response was, well, we don't do that. Well, but this is what Maynard is willing to work with you on, so, you know, that's where the, you know, the pushback came, comes.
If I'm not a builder of hotels, I'm not going to build a hotel.
Correct, but the owner of the property wants to make some money off of their property, so Maynard perhaps should contact the owner of the property and say, you know what, this guy, the developer's not willing to help to work with the town, and if we want to spin wheels for years to come, you know...
They've been spinning since 2006. It's a long time.
I guess, real quick, the, David, I did go through the list, I was going to say your list, but it's not your list.
Not my list.
Yeah, obviously, you know, we've gone over, you know, we've gone through this, I think we disagree a little on how it, some of this kind of plays out, but I really have no issue. You've clarified the few questions I had coming in as to kind of what the, what the path was going to be on this, and who was going to sort of go with this. It's going to be a message, a memo to planning board and to Bill. You know, I think a lot of these are, you know, even from my time on planning, you know, a lot of these have come up, specifically the assisted living, medical offices, I thought health... I thought Health Club and Jim was actually in the N B O D.
It may be in the N B O D, but one particular.
Yeah, I mean, but any of the medical, you know, the assisted living, I think the hotel to me was new.
Commercial recreation was new.
Yeah, but I, I know that had come up. I had been involved in some meetings where commercial recreation had come up.
Yeah, Bernie was the advocate.
Yeah, it was a Bernie.
Bernie was the biggest advocate.
Um, I, I will say, you know, I, I'd like to see, you know, I, I favor sending this to them, to the planning board. I'm not sure that, you know, by December, the end of December, you're going to know that whether or not a hotel is feasible. I'd like to see some, some preliminary in traffic and, you know, water.
Yeah.
I'd like to see some, just some, you know, some impacts. Everything has impacts, you know, whether it's, you know, retail has traffic, but it doesn't create schoolchildren, and it doesn't, and it, you know, doesn't take a lot of water in sewer. Assisted living has less traffic, but uses a lot of water in sewer. Again, there, there's always a tradeoff, and I'd like, I'm just not sure if December, if we're going to put a hard date in there. I, I think an update by December, the end of December would be useful.
Yeah, and, and it, it's also fine with me, and I think it would probably be fine with the board, if they said, you know what? We're not ready to talk about, in December, they might say to us, we're not ready to talk about any of these except for the Health Club. We think we can analyze the Health Club and have it prepared for Town Meeting in May, and then we have a article in May that, that it's an add-on to allowable uses with, with special permit for one issue. It's one thing, but it's progress. It would be one more thing than we've done in two and a half years since the, or a year and a half since the Town Meeting vote. We've done nothing, and we've taken, the planning board's done nothing to move the ball forward, the Board of Selectmen's done nothing to move the ball forward. Now it's the time. We've got a newly constituted board that's, that's willing to take the, the ball forward.
Okay, so I think, from what I'm hearing, we're in agreement to forward this request to the planning board?
Yes.
Very good. Kevin, can you do that?
And I, one last point, and I emphasize this on this, I, we, there should be no predetermined deadline. If they can't do it by, by Springtown Meeting on any of these, that's fine, but let's target then the Fall Town Meeting, but get something in motion so there's progress.
Are you specifically referring to the N B O D? Are you talking about the industrial, underlying industrial zone?
Well, they could, they can analyze it from, the problem is if we talk about the underlying industrial, then that opens it up to other spots where some of these things may not be practical. And an N B O D obviously would require, the, the important thing too is I don't want to take away any Town Meeting authority over, you know, what goes on eventually, so.
All of these would go to Town Meeting.
All of these would go to Town Meeting.
But any, it's a change of use, change of use. Anything in the protective zoning bylaw goes to Town Meeting.
So, I don't think that it would be proper at this point to suggest, you know, they may want to come back and say, yeah, this might work in any industrial zone. As you know, I, I think we changed the zoning at one, at the, or did we? At, I'm trying to think if there was ever a discussion for hotel over at the mill, but there reminded me of discussion, but we never.
No, my understanding was that there was a hotel in Maynard some years ago.
Well, there was.
It was not pleasant, and therefore it was removed from the zoning bylaws.
Well, there was, yeah, the Maynard Hotel.
Became a roaming house.
Hmm?
Became a roaming house.
Correct.
Okay.
Over where Wendy's is now. There was a previous one historically, apparently where Memorial Park is now, there was a, a well-established hotel there at one point, way back in history.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna shut this one down.
Yes.
Because we've, it's now 10 o'clock, and we've got about seven more to go through, so.
Thank you.
Uh, the B I, uh, B O S F Y 15 Goals interim report, Kevin, or Andrew?
Yeah, I've provided.
Was that going to be, was that going to be Bill?
It was.
Please tell me any of these that were going to be Bill, so that I can.
Bill requested it, but you have a three-page memo of interim report status that addresses the three goals that the Board of Selectmen laid out for fiscal year 2015 in an update. I think it's pretty, pretty cumbersome, and, you know, I, I think it's evident that we've done, we've done some good things. You know, anytime you can, you ask somebody to do 10 things and they do four, that's pretty good. I think.
You'd be in the Hall of Fame in baseball.
Yeah, I think, I think there's definitely some notable accomplishments, bigger accomplishments or wins, if you will, that the town can certainly hang their hat on and show that we've committed in the last six months to what our goals were. You know, that, other than that, I mean, you have it in front of you, I wouldn't entertain any questions that, but this was a, the first time I've ever seen anybody ever ask for this, but it's not necessarily a bad thing, but this was at Bill's request.
Okay.
And I didn't give it a letter grade as a report card.
No, I, I think, one comment I would make, and, on the communication issue, I think, I think your blog and the Facebook page, and I, I don't do Twitter, but, so I can't comment on that, but I think those have been very positive. I think a lot of people are looking at it and utilizing it.
Yeah.
I think that's good. I do think we can do better, especially internally, in communication at some points, and I think we should work on that, and that should be a goal continuing on forward, and it's probably, I think we talked about this at our Goals meeting, the communication is probably going to be one of those things that's on the list every single year, because you can never do enough of it, and you can never be good enough at it. But I think we're making progress, and I think, you know, I think you should be commended for that, and, and I very much appreciate the fact that the effort is there, so, thank you.
Okay. I guess unless anybody has any questions specifically?
No.
So to kind of move things along. Uh, 12, item number 12, the B O S hiring process for appointed positions. David, I believe this was.
Yeah.
Comments regarding.
And I saw just today, and, and perhaps for brevity of the meeting, and also to allow Bill to be here when we have a discussion on it, I saw, thank you to the chief, but it just came in, I think.
Came in this afternoon.
Yeah, earlier today, where he outlined some of what other local communities do relative to appointments of police officers. One of the things that I think is important for us to find out in addition to this, Kevin, if you could, which of these communities have their Board of Selectmen as the police commissioners? Which might be a significant difference if a community does not.
All of the ones that say B O S Appointing Authority.
Okay.
So Lincoln Stowe, Waylands, and Northborough.
Okay.
All the rest, the Appointing Authority by charter.
It's interesting that in Northborough, with the, as the Appointing Authority, the candidate doesn't even go before the Board of Selectmen. That's somewhat odd.
Well, again, well, I mean, we didn't really discuss it at the last meeting. I mean, my, my personal opinion is that, you know, it took, and Chris kind of brought it up earlier, we do have, you know, we do have our staff, they put together their committees, we trust our staff to, to make the right choices, it's why we chose them. You know, I think, my only comment to, to the statement from, from the previous meeting was, you know, I, I don't know that, I, I can't sit here and say that I'm more qualified to select a police officer out of a group of candidate police officers. You know, I, I rely significantly on the chief to, to go through.
Well, if I could speak specifically to the police, I mean, this is a blanket kind of, yeah, I don't think this is a blanket policy that fits every position. What you put into a police chief or fire chief search versus a police officer is a totally different discussion.
Absolutely.
As is D P W director, or even, you know, even town planner. So, as far as to set a blanket policy, I, I don't think that. What I would suggest though is, I think in, I've talked to the chief, he's, and he welcomes it, would be to have a representative from the board sit on, on those interviews so they feel better about the process and, and the decision. But there's a lot of, yeah, I mean, let's be frank, the Board of Selectmen have done the prior police interviews, of which we've had several, those weren't all good either. We've had several terminations and still ongoing pending lawsuits with individuals they've selected.
Let's be fair about the process, let's be fair about the process.
So, it's not, it's not going to.
Who was brought to us. Since the current chief, and this is not in any way a criticism of the prior chief, but since the current chief came on, we haven't had that situation. The prior chief had a different approach to pulling in names off of the civil service list than the current chief does, and that might be some of the issues. It was not, the candidates presented were of different qualities.
Which is why the chief's point. Why would I present three individuals when there's only one that, that he's recommending? You know, if the process plays out that way, they've gone through far more background. There's, there's all, there's a lot of reasons, you know, which he could, he could lay out better, and he doesn't necessarily want to be public about it all either. But there's, there's a lot of reasons, part of it too, is it's thousands and thousands of dollars that would be added to this process, because we're, we don't do the full extent unless they've made its selection. So that's medicals, further background investigations, that all that process kind of stops when they've identified a candidate. That adds costs to the community as well for the hiring process. But I think the big, I mean, really, I think the solution is to, is to have a member of the Board of Selectmen.
I, I think that may resolve some of the concerns that, that I have, but again, I would prefer to wait for Bill to have his opinions input.
Sure, yeah.
We can certainly take this up at the next meeting.
And we're not expecting a police, a police officer candidate next week, so.
Well, we are for promotions, so.
Next week, next meeting?
Soon. We have a sergeant position that's vacant currently.
He, didn't he tell us though, for those, for those positions, he would bring more than one candidate?
Um, there's two openings for sergeant, there's one opening for lieutenant. They've gone through the full, what I explained before, was they would gone through the full exam and assessment center. They then have ranked the candidates. So, of the four that participated in the sergeant one, they're essentially ranked by their scores through assessment and exam and everything else, they get a calculated average, and then they're ranked by their grade. There's three that did the lieutenant, and they are ranked by their grade, similar, but the full assessment and exam and all that. So, I, you know, I, it's, I don't know, I, I mean, there's two, there's two vacancies right now in the, you know, in, in the sergeant positions. He has the two candidates that he would recommend and prefer.
So he'll, and, he'll bring two candidates, or will he bring three candidates, or will he?
Well, that's what I think we're talking about.
Is the process ongoing now?
No, it's finished. So he has one that's in the acting role, that's serving currently acting, he, he would like to move forward with appointing that one individual. The next time there's the sergeant, you know, it's to some degree, it undermines the entire process from promotional exams if he recommends somebody in the assessment, and then the Board of Selectmen make a decision that's not part of that. You know, as does it particularly with a, with a lieutenant position, whereas you've put forth two candidates, and he's making them a recommendation on it.
Can we then have this again on a, the next agenda? Well, obviously, if we're, I'd like to hear from the chief too, because we haven't had official comments from the chief regarding it, and I'd like to have a good discussion with the chief as to what his expectations are. Remember too, we're not always going to have this chief, we're not always going to have this Board of Selectmen, we're not always going to have, so if it's going to be of an official policy, we should make it such, but we should be comfortable that that's what we want to go forward.
I would add, David, you do always have the option of not appointing.
Yeah, but I would feel if we, if we have.
Understood, but, I, I know where you're gonna, I understand where you're gonna go, I mean, but, you know, to the, to the point of, you know, I, I certainly hope we wouldn't have a chief that we didn't have, you know, some faith in that he would perform his duties to the best of his ability. And I think if, if we came to the point where someone, he, where a chief brought someone in who the board had that much apprehension about, that we would not only be looking at that candidate.
Yeah, and part of it too is, quite frankly, I, I don't want to be giving away authority that the Board of Selectmen is supposed to take and have, and gradually ebb the authority of the Board of Selectmen elsewhere, because this is the elected body of the residents, and the elected, the residents have the right and have, deserve to have the, the say that their charter says they should have, and we shouldn't be giving that away. That's part of my concern.
Yeah, and just like I said, just a random, a random stab at seven communities, not a single one of them go before, you know, or actually interview.
Yeah, and part of our issue is the history that we've had. We've, this is the way we've always done it, so that's why it's interesting to see what other communities do.
That's why I agree, if we're allowed to sit in on the interview process where all the tough questions are asked, we can gauge a better feel of who the candidate is instead of when they come before us and the few questions we ask them, I'd rather see how we go through that process, and see what it helps, because that is supposed to be by far the hardest process to do, the owner boards. My friends have gone through it, have gone through mock ones, it's, it's an experience.
The assessments are extremely, and we pay big money for them, thousands of dollars for the assessments, and, you know, you put candidates, particularly for promotional assessments, you put them through that, it's, it's an all-day event. I mean, it's eight hours, and they put them through mock scenarios, they put them through the lieutenants, through mocked, you know, meetings, that, and see how they interact with a number of things, from ethics to leadership to decisions. So it's a, it's a very thorough process, and it's the process that every community that has got out of civil service is utilizing now. So, you know, I, I guess just to leave you at that, my recommendation would be certainly to have a, a Board of Selectmen member involved with the process, whether it be promotional or new hire, and, and then, you know, present a candidate, because it's not fair too to the chief to present somebody that he ultimately doesn't want. That's why his feeling is, I'm presenting you the candidate that, that I feel is best for the department and for the community. But I think definitely there should be Board of Selectmen involvement with, with that.
Okay. We had, move on.
Yep. So you have to just, I guess just add that to the next meeting.
I think we're already overwhelmed with the next meeting too.
Or the next one after that.
We have a hefty meeting the next time, right?
Yeah, renewals and some other stuff, like the license hearing, but it'll be okay. He's going to be here for that, so my suggestion.
I think that would be good, just to give him a chance to.
Suggestion would be to add that specific, if we're going to talk about police appointed positions, he'll be here anyway at our next meeting.
I, I think that's reasonable. The chief can, can weigh in. I think that the comment about, you know, having a member sit in on the process, I think maybe part of the issue is that most of us, you know, probably Tim excluded, don't know the process, so that, that might be, that might be the best route, but we can, we can certainly touch this again at the, a future meeting. Cell towers is complete, so the F Y 16 budget update, so.
Yeah.
So that the letter did go out?
Right.
For the, for the budget message went out last Friday?
Yes, went out on the 14th.
Did you want to, did you have anything on that, other than?
Uh, no, I don't really have much updates there, other than, yeah, that the letter did go out. We met today in our leadership meeting, discussed the expectations for department heads, where the budget should be in submittals. You'll note January 2nd as a deadline for department budget submittals, and we continue to move forward with some revisions to revenue projections and start, have already started to plug in some fixed costs that we know that, you know, that are, we already can plug in and see where we sit. So there's, we're already looking at the expense side of the budget, and I continuously look at it and meet with staff, particularly with, with Mike, to request him run certain figures every week, so it, we're, we're underway, full, full gear ahead.
I certainly don't want to revisit the earlier discussion, but we've already looked at revenue?
Oh yeah, we've, yeah, we've been looking at revenue for six weeks. You know, revenue's constantly changing, I mean, you know, to some degree we have it, you know, but, yeah.
Andrew's chomping at the bit.
Huh? Oh, you guys have seen revenue?
I know. You.
Oh yeah.
That we've been looking at revenue.
Absolutely.
Bill alluded to the fact that revenue is done already.
Yeah.
I assume he meant that it's been looked at, or, we've been looking at putting those numbers together.
Yes. Revenue's been, it's on its fourth revision. Yes, revenue's been, it's on its fourth revision, and, yeah, I mean, part of what that discussion would have impacts to 2016, this discussion, and we've already sent out the budget message for 2016, and you're setting a stage for what that would look like. That's why the time is, would be to do it during the budget, yeah.
Quickly, and not to drag it out, but any sense of the nine seat, the chance of nine-seat cuts, and would that come from Governor Patrick before he leaves?
Yeah.
And what is the sense you're getting, if anything, from like the Town Administrators' Association and MMA and those people?
Nothing yet, other than that local aid is still on the chopping block. It's $325 million projected deficit. They've heard our side, they said that we hear you, receive you, but it's still, it's still out there. They've committed that they're not going to go to any stabilization to address the deficits, so, you know, local, local aid, whether it's general, or whether it's chapter 70, everything is still out there, we don't know what it'll be. Last time we had it, they didn't touch unrestricted aid, they actually just cut, touched the school piece, they left unrestricted aid where it was at. But, you know, that's all, that's constantly changing, it's, it's the lowest it's been in 10 years.
When does the legislature go back into session?
Uh, I don't know when that is, January 4th or something like that, yeah.
This'll all happen before they're.
January, yeah, I think it's the 4th.
Presumably this could happen before they're even back in session?
Yeah, he was expected to make some sort of formal, he has yet to actually come out and make any formal comment on it. It's, it's coming from the Secretary of Finance, which is Glenn Shaw, and Deval Patrick has yet, the governor has yet to come out and actually speak to it yet, it's just coming out of his, out of his cabinet, but it's forthcoming. So we're awaiting his response, but the MMA on behalf of all municipalities in Massachusetts has been advocating, has asked municipalities to advocate through their legislature, state senators, and, yeah, it's still, it's still an option that we could see, we could see impacts from that.
Okay.
But, yeah, I mean, I don't know. Bill's saying, you know, I was, I was taken by surprise, I talked to him offline, but the fact that, you know, we talk about transparency and getting information early, the fact that that was thrown in the Dropbox, not emailed to me, is a concern of mine. You know, particularly as I'm here preparing the FY16 budget and dealing with many other issues in town, to see that if I didn't randomly check Dropbox, I would have never known it was in there, but that's not an issue I want to deal with here, but it's the second time it's happened where I've been taken off guard, for what it's worth. That's all I have for budget updates.
All right. Well, why don't you keep going on economic development?
No, I'm not sure, Paul, just want to make note that the Fine Arts Theater does have a tentative ribbon-cutting opening with the Chamber of Commerce on December 5th at noon. Be similar, Jason, you and I were at the last one in advance, I anticipate, you know, kind of an 11:45 gathering with a 12 o'clock ribbon-cutting and some sort of light refreshment type of thing afterwards. It's tentatively scheduled, but we do.
Popcorn.
I'm sorry?
Popcorn.
Yeah, it was better than that, they did have deli sandwiches, but, you know, it's always a good event, and particularly, this is a long-awaited opening.
Yeah, this is a, this is a big deal.
A big deal.
I've already taken in a movie.
Yeah.
It was very good, and the theater was great, and the kids that were working there were great.
Yep.
Will's daughter.
She there?
Will's daughter, not my daughter, my friends, my, my daughter works at the middle school.
That's her, yeah, yeah. She could moonlight at the theater. No, yeah, it's, it's exciting time for our downtown, it's exciting time for our community.
We have a meeting between now and then?
Oh, December 2nd.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so we don't have to decide, I, I would encourage, I'm gonna see what my schedule looks like, but I would encourage, because, you know, this is, uh, this is a big deal, I would encourage anybody who can make it to come down and show their support.
What day of the week is that?
It's a Friday.
Right, yeah, they usually always do them on a Friday.
Ask Sarah about the whole Friday at noon thing, but.
I know, is what it is.
It's.
If some, if that changes, obviously, oh, update the board, but that is a tentative, we think that will be a go date, so, yeah, it's a good thing. That's it for, for tonight, for economic development, if we want to.
Any word on, on Clock Tower Place? That's my regular question now.
No, I know, mine too, I called today.
Yeah, I think.
Nobody.
When the news comes, we're all gonna know.
Yeah, I certainly will make sure I send that out, at this point, nobody, including the, those that have put in proposals, as potential investors have heard from the bank, we don't, nobody knows what the bank's at. It's taken far longer than expected, and nobody, everybody's kind of in the dark about it, so. Any day, I can't say that they've, we received a $150,000 payment today, so they're, they're up to date and current on taxes and everything, so from that side of things, things are in good shape. For the future, daily, I continue to.
That's been every, that's been any day now since, you know, I met Joe on the street back in like August.
Yeah.
Maybe a little later than that, September.
Yeah, well, yeah, originally it was giving them the option to come back, and then it became, we gotta do it publicly, they vetted nine, they've got it narrowed down to three, and now it's.
You don't know any of the three, or do we know two of the three?
I know two of the three.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know the third, but at this point, I think it's, it's a, it's a back and forth with whoever's gonna pay more and is a secure buyer, but whoever's gonna pay more for the note, the bank ultimately doesn't care who ends up in Maynard, who ends up with the property, but they want to cover, you know, if they, you know, if they're gonna lose cents on the dollar.
They're gonna minimize their loss.
They prefer 50 cents over 30 cents on the dollar, so. I think that's what's going on, it's a back and forth on how much more, I did hear that the numbers that came in originally were far lower than the bank anticipated, so, you know, if it's far lower than the assessed value, so I would imagine somewhere in 12, 13, 14 million probably. But that's ongoing.
Real quick on that, they have a, EDC has a meeting this week?
Oh yeah, good point, actually tomorrow, I'll be there. Tomorrow, the EDC has a meeting, and they're presenting.
Oh, tomorrow evening?
Tomorrow evening, it's 7:00.
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM in this room, presenting, actually have a guest that's coming to that meeting that's presenting the findings from.
That was Pat Behringer?
Yes.
Has she been here before, is she the woman that spoke previously?
No, she has.
She's the person who conducted the grant?
Yeah.
Is it a meeting or just a presentation by, by her?
Just a presentation.
It's a presentation.
Yeah, Chista was the mechanism.
Andrew, as far as you know, she's never presented in Maynard before?
I don't think so.
Okay.
She comes for a firm, Fine Point Associates.
I'm trying to remember, there was a woman who presented before on economic development in this room.
May have, but.
Oh no, that was, that was through planning, that was the early 129, and I can't think of her name, but I can find it for you.
But it's not, well, it doesn't matter, it's not the same.
It's not the same person.
Pat Behringer from Fine Point Associates, so she'll be presenting at 7:00 PM tomorrow evening.
Do they have, does EDC have a, any other meeting?
No.
So that's gonna be in lieu of their meeting this week?
Correct.
It will be just one hour tomorrow night, obviously like, I figured it was scheduled for one hour because we, the woman was on contract or something.
No, I don't think it will last, you know, any more than that, then it's a matter of questions and answers.
Okay.
We won't shut it off at 8:00, but I don't expect it to be long.
I expect it'll be similar to the meeting last week with the folks from.
Probably fewer queue and, you know, questions, yeah, it's a different topic and.
Understood.
Yeah.
Okay, TA's report?
Yeah, along, similarly along those lines, we're currently underway. The town planner is working, as well as administration, exploring a grant through MAPC for some considerable grant money to fund a potential master plan update through MAPC, which looks good, we got some preliminary information into them to see what, if they think it's viable, and if so, we'll come back with a further update, but that could be a significant benefit to the town in that we're in need of a master plan update, but, you know, a new, this would actually be a revised update, but a new plan from scratch, you know, as we've seen potential up to 140, 150,000 dollars for a new master plan, so be good if we could obtain some grant funding and work with MAPC through this process. Potentially, we could know by March if we get some award money.
Okay.
But we're exploring it with them right now, it's underway. I think it's the streetlight project upgrades, for the board that doesn't know, we're going through a pretty major upgrade retrofit to new LED streetlights. The downtown area has already been done, the Acorns, the Main Street Nason, there is, I think, four that are on the list to go back and address, but starting on Monday, the 24th, they're going to be back into town, and they're working on completing the project, which is all of the mains, all the entryways in, and then there'll be, there'll be enough to finish those, and then they'll go out, they're, they're working on a plan to go from there into, into some of the neighborhoods as far as we can, and then at that point, we'll, we'll be able to identify a phase, at that point, will really be phase three, a phase three number that's still remaining and a cost associated with it, but we're gonna do a, a major impact to all of the main roads in town will be completed, looking at actually, I think, Rose Hill area, that area off of 27 Rose Hill, cutting and some of down towards Old Marlboro and Tobin, kind of being part of that phase, and then we'll look to go, this, you know, it's sporadic around town because it was never really a, a scheme on, a plan on how it was done, when they first had done some, my predecessor had taken a couple of random, you know, so you'll find some of the presidential areas that are done, others that aren't, and there's isolated areas where we've purposely done it, where we crosswalk issues and things like that, so it's, it is a little bit all over the place, but by the end of this couple of weeks, we should see all of the mains completely retrofitted and then have worked into some of the neighborhoods, particularly in the area off of Parker Street closer to Sudbury, and, so. Any questions, I know that's kind of new, okay. The other item is 16 Dean Street, the property that we have officially received tax title, and we are auction, moving forward with auctioning that property off, it's 16 Dean Street. The auction will be held at the, at the property on December 18th at 10:30 AM for a visit or a viewing, if you will, of the property, I think the actual auction is scheduled to start right at 11:00 AM, but that's 16 Dean Street, and it's a property that's been on their books for a while, and we have finally received judgment on that and.
Same company auctioning?
Yes, we've been utilizing Peter Brown, our attorney from D Ambrosio Brown, continues to represent the town for tax title work, and then Paul Zico's from Zico's Associates, which I think is in Shrewsbury, they handle all of the marketing strategy, they, they put the flyers together, they get the word out there, they reach out, they send it to every single person that's ever come to one of our auctions from prior years, so we capture all of the local developers, as well as their own lists, so the word is, is, they do a great job, Zico's does a great job with the marketing end, and then if any, I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to hear him actually do the auction, it's, it's quite a, it's a good show, but Paul Zico's is the auctioneer, and, and he runs it like a regular auction.
Fast talker.
He's a very fast talker, that's, it's good, and we, the most recent one with him was the Keene Ave property, which was a very successful, the town made out very well, as far as the value, so. Last item I have is just the COA director position has been posted, we've already started to see resumes flow in, been posted to the State Mass Council on Aging Association, it's been posted to the Mass Municipal Association, networks of existing COA directors, we've been able to funnel that through Andrew's new friends that he's met in the last six months, to get that word out there if they know anybody that may be interested or might be a good fit, and those are due back December 5th.
Have we had any discussion, is there any need to have any discussion on the process for the hiring, whether or not, have we had that discussion?
Nah, it's laid out by Charter.
It is, okay.
Yeah, the COA is the appointing authority with input from the town administrator.
Gotcha.
So, that's, administration is receiving all of the resumes, I think we talked about putting together an actual search committee, if you will, a search panel, it would consist of representative members of the Council on Aging and Andrew and anybody else.
Wendy Eller-Groh.
And Wendy, we've asked Wendy from the Boys and Girls Club because of her knowledge, particularly with programs, and, you know, she's a great resource, she's agreed to serve, I forgot about her, serve as a member of that search committee, so it'll be another, another different look, which will, which will be good, so. I'm excited about it, some of the resumes we've seen, we've seen some qualified, talented people, at least on paper, and I'm looking forward to getting some good leadership in them. That's it.
Okay, the chair report.
That's you.
Since he ran off today, and I believe the only thing that we did just discuss about pulling out of that, we've discussed in correspondence, the letter from DEP.
Correct.
So, since that's about the only thing I think I know about in his chair report, let's touch on that. Kevin, do you have a copy of that handy, I'm just looking for it now?
It's in, it's in the packet.
It's in the packet, scanned in, the packet itself.
I know, I've seen it, drawing a blank.
The most important thing is the last paragraph.
The discussion of a meeting?
Yes.
Right in there, after the letter from Betty Duncan, Elizabeth Duncan, so COA report, Betty Duncan, and I think the DEP reports, it's about halfway through the correspondences, ish.
Yeah, it's on page 24.
All right, and there it goes, okay. So, Mass DEP is recommending that members of the relevant town boards, conservation, select, planning, and DPW meet with representatives from their office to explore the issues out there and to research possible measures to be employed to mitigate the problem. Our staff will coordinate the date and time of that meeting, so it is convenient for board members and residents. Their contact is Mary, Mary Ann DePinto. Has Ms. DePinto contacted us?
Uh, no, contact person they've primarily have been with is Linda Hanson, the conservation agent, and as of yet, I have not heard that she's heard from them other than receiving the letter.
Right, I know they received the letter, they also received.
Some other.
There was a superseding order of conditions from the.
Yeah. But no, I haven't heard from her that she's received anything, I know our office hasn't. Has Linda said anything to you?
Hey, we're going to hold a meeting tonight, there was a post team issue, and it's been rescheduled for Thursday.
For CONSCOM specifically?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kevin, I have one issue, a concern actually, this letter came in on October, October 30th, I don't know what date it was received at town hall, but we've had a meeting since this time, and it wasn't in the packet then, and the only reason I even saw this was because an abutter to the property showed it to me.
Yeah.
And when we have a state, or a state agency that writes to our town and asks for a meeting with the Board of Selectmen and we don't know about it, that's a problem. We talked about communication as one of the things earlier, so that's a problem, and it's the second time it's happened, because if you remember.
I, I.
They're notified us?
I agree on the sentiment.
They've contacted us to schedule it.
I'm agreeing on the sentiment here, as far as the, you know, we need to get things, especially when they come, I'm just looking.
They've CC'd the conservation, so if I already had a discussion with them, wasn't sent to the Board of Selectmen, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
It's been a funneling process.
But, but the conservation agents should have been in touch with the board, should have immediately forwarded to you, who should have immediately forwarded to us.
Jason and I have discussed that as well.
And it's the second time that we've had an issue with an environmental issue, if you remember back, you know, in the painful days of 129, when the federal government was in town, and nobody told the Board of Selectmen the federal government was in our, in our community looking into things. That was a communication drop there, so I'm concerned that there's a pattern, even though it's separated by a year and a half, we need to know when any state agency asks to speak to the Board of Selectmen.
Agreed, I fault DEP as well, should have, they should have CC'd, they're interested in all the other boards, they shouldn't have relied on one.
That's true, but.
They shouldn't have relied on CONSCOM to distribute to all of those other boards.
It's true, but it's, it's.
I mean, they send me stuff. I mean, they send me stuff on everything else.
It's disturbing, though, when a, when a member of the public comes up to me in my role as a member of the Board of Selectmen and says, "What are your thoughts about that DEP letter?" And I say, "What DEP letter?", and it gets handed to me.
Is this Mr. Hall?
No.
No, I was, and I think it's probably the same evening I got caught by an abutter also. And I hadn't seen it, I had heard there was a letter, but I hadn't seen anything, so.
Yeah, we had the conversation, and I hadn't seen it.
Right.
So, you're getting it as quickly as I've seen it.
I understand.
And I've addressed that with Conservation, but again, you know, yeah, they could have, they could have pulled that out of the letter if they had, they read it, but, you know, it was sent to one board, not an individual, it was sent to Conscom as a CC, and, you know, them knowing they wanted a meeting with all boards, should have sent the letter to other individuals.
Well, that, I can-
Tonight would have been their first board meeting since receiving the letter as well. I'm not trying to defend them for not notifying others, but perhaps they wanted to address it internally before moving on it.
That's a good point.
But it's not ours, and that's, and this came in on October 30th, so it was in Town Hall, and there was a request for a meeting with the Board of Selectmen, and the Conservation agent didn't forward it to Kevin, who didn't forward it to us.
But the letter was sent to Mr. Anderson.
And it's CC'd to Conservation Commission.
The action to be taken is Mr. Anderson's, not the Conscom's. Conscom's simply a carbon copy.
It's dated the 30th, I don't know when Town Hall received it, somewhere in the first week or whatever.
Let's get past the who and just, you know, if we get it, it'd be good to get a courtesy copy, you know, if it's coming to them, courtesy copy would be helpful.
We all agree with that.
That's fine, I think we do, and that's why. Okay. I guess, I would have suggested, you know, rather than wait, do we prompt them? However, I do not wish to, I'd like to hear what Conservation has to say before the Board of Selectmen, you guys can all weigh in, before the Board of Selectmen decides to move forward on this. Certainly, if no action comes out of Conservation Commission, then I think certainly we should, you know, schedule a meeting. But beyond that, I'd like to at least give them their option to speak.
How about if the residents ask for the meeting?
Oh, I believe one of them already has.
So, doesn't that supersede Conscom's request for the meeting? Aren't we reporting to the residents not to? If a resident asks for a meeting that the DEP has suggested, I would think that we want to be as proactive as possible in working with the DEP. But, I certainly am willing to let Conscom discuss it, but if a resident has asked for it, I think that we should, we should have the discussion about, is it something we want to do? And that's what we're doing here, so, okay, let's wait for Conscom's comment, but it seems like we're pushing the ball down the road.
Well, I think it's, I'll be honest with you, I think it's appropriate for them to get the way in on it before we have the meeting. I support having the meeting.
Yeah.
Hence the fact that I would have said if they were meeting on it tonight and we were waiting for just a, an okay, we've received it, here's the recommendation, I think we would move forward right now. I, you know, personally, my opinion is that we appoint boards, and the goal is to let them do their thing. Not that we turn a blind eye to them, but we also don't, you know, help run their meetings.
They're also, we have relocated this week, so, part of why we haven't heard from them. We're at the mercy of their schedule, with limited staff and relocating-
Do you know when they meet again?
Relocating to a new office.
Thursday?
Yeah, you said Thursday?
Conscom, yeah, Thursday.
They rescheduled their meeting tonight to Thursday, alright, so-
Yeah, so that's why, two days-
Ask Linda to bring it to their attention, to, I'm fine.
Okay. And, we can all follow up, I don't think that anybody has an issue with getting that meeting scheduled sometime, basically reaching out sometime, probably by the end of this week or early next, with the holiday. Is that fair?
Sure.
Yeah, I have no idea what, you know, what they're going to tell us, what they're gonna say, but I think we have to have the conversation.
Alright. Again, knowing that being the only item that was on the Chair's report, that I was privy to. I will move ahead to old new business, I can say that I have no items for old new business.
I have a couple, first off, thank you, Andrew, for working on that nuisance issue that is moving along. I appreciate the effort, Kevin, you too, and the chief as well, for their efforts, so. I've spoken through email with the resident, and, you know, hopefully, he understands where we're at.
I spoke with Kelly this afternoon, as I indicated in my email, and she has regular contact with that resident, and he was well aware of the actions she had taken through last week.
Okay.
Just by indicating the letters that the town had, well, he didn't say the town had nothing, he said, "Nothing's changed", but he just appreciates that there's a process we have to do.
Yeah, and I summarized for him, just so you are aware, I summarized for him and then emailed back to him today saying, "Here's where we're at, give us a little bit of time", so. And I learned about it Saturday, or Sunday, one of the days of the weekend. Also, I asked, two meetings now in a row about the sign for the Boys and Girls Club, is that up?
I believe so.
Okay.
They actually had to order it, I was with the, took around, a ride around town, number of issues that I looked at with the police chief this afternoon, one of which is the one you mentioned.
By the way, I apologize, that photograph-
Had to be old.
Sent it to me today.
Yeah.
And it was apparently not today.
Right, that was one area that we looked at, I believe the sign is up. Or, I actually, I spoke to Chris about it today, too, there was another one, they were reordering on the other entryway coming off of Parker Street that's faded, it's a faded "Do Not Enter" sign that's kind of angled.
I think that's the wrong place.
They were reordering it, but there is-
They had one, but you needed to order the second one.
Yeah, maybe that's what it is.
Okay.
I don't know, because it's art from the Great Roadside, it looked like there was a new stanchion and a new sign, but I don't know if that was-
Now the football season's over and the soccer season's over, we don't need it as much.
Right.
But it's there for next season.
Be there for the next season.
As long as the plow doesn't knock it over.
Alright.
Thank you, that's it.
Chris? Tim?
Telethon rep? Who's doing the telethon?
You are.
Sweet.
You have a history with it, right?
I do.
I think, actually, that was something that the-
Was that in the Chairman's report?
He mentioned it to me before the meeting.
It's not an email today, so.
Yeah.
So that's the WAVM telethon?
Yeah.
And when is, the 12th? Okay.
Do us, well, as I know you will.
And a question for Kev.
Yes.
Where do we stand on, do I have to resign from CPC?
Yeah, you got an email today.
That was official?
Yeah, from, actually, Town Council directly, and asked if, she gave her phone number if you had any questions, but they've looked at it, they've reviewed, you know, what's in place, part of which, some of which is silent because CPC didn't exist with our charter, because it didn't get enacted till after our latest charter. But their makeup and their recommendation is because of your role as Selectman that you resign as a member of the CPC. And you certainly could remain as a liaison, a non-voting entity.
Is that because of our charter, or because of-
That sounded like she told me in email today.
You know, a Selectman may serve on town boards, but not if the board reports to the Selectman. And Tim serves on CPC as a member of the Capitol Planning Committee, which reports to the Selectman. So it sounds a little convoluted, but it's like-
Well, it's simply-
The economic development committee doesn't report to the Selectman.
But we don't have, we don't have, we don't have a representative on the CPC that we- I thought at one point, we appointed somebody because we didn't have the time to do it, as if we were supposed to have a represent-
Is it a Board of Selectman member who is a-
Just a representative?
Yeah.
Representative on the CPC, no?
Not a voting member. She did provide, I think, a more formal memo to that, I don't know if you've, you probably haven't a chance to look at it yet, but the rationale as to why. Like 4:00, 5:00 o'clock?
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, Tim, you open it?
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor? Good evening.